And notice the nice, cool temperatures that we've been enjoying. At least some parts of the country, I guess. I think a number of you know, a number of you were there. We had exciting activity at 5:30 this evening with a official ceremony and ribbon-cutting event for our new Mountain View Bridge expansion. And just very briefly, obviously, that project opened, was that, I believe, last Thursday night during the night, it got striped and opened and so on and so forth. Happy to report it's was on or even under budget and on time and it's going to be something that is very valuable to our community with better connections throughout our community, better public safety with some of the limitations, better access for trails such as along the San Timoteo Creek and flood control. So, a lot of positive things going on and it was a great event. Lots of people deserve credit. We went through a lot of that, so I'm not going to repeat it all tonight, but certainly been a community effort with many former council members, many staff members, and many community input that's finally all come together. Exciting to see that happen, so just to announce that. All right. We would like to, at this point, ask our Madam Clerk to go ahead and have our roll call, please.
Councilman Ziprick.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Councilman Popescu.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tempore Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Brower.
Here.
All present.
We also, after the new bridge dedication ceremony, met in closed session and there was one item on the city council agenda as listed and there was also one item from Redevelopment Agency that Dr. Rigsby presided over and I will turn at least the city council portion to our city attorney for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item C on the city council agenda was a closed-session conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation as identified on the agenda. In that matter, the council gave direction, there's no action to report at this time. On the Redevelopment Agency agenda, item C1 was a conference with real property negotiator. The property is identified there along with the negotiating parties. Met and conferred, gave direction, there's no other action to report at this time.
Thank you. It is now a portion of our agenda for our invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Rigsby.
Bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for your leadership of our city. We count on it, we can't do without it. We ask that you bless our citizens, bless our discussions tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. This brings us to the portion of oral reports from the public. If you have an item that's listed on the agenda, please wait until that item does come up. If there's an item that you would like to bring to our attention that's not on the agenda, now is the time. I have one slip that has been turned in on that portion and Mr. Wiley had an item he would like to bring to our attention. Remember, you have item number 10. I'll try and remember also since they're both on here, but don't hesitate to remind me if I forget.
Appreciate that. To the council and especially Jarp, I'd like to say that that bridge, you know, I've been following proceedings of what goes on up there and was very impressed with the way everything was handled. The traffic flow, and I mentioned a concern to you earlier about the problems with traffic. Fortunately, they didn't materialize. We had a few little problems, but things went great and I was real impressed with the way everybody handled that construction. I'd like to make a few comments and then a request, if I could. I'd like to set some facts straight and it's a little bothering to me that when we talk about things at the council meeting, there are times that I think things get stretched. If you do your homework and you look at the facts and the figures, they tell a story. I was a little disappointed at the last council meeting with the discussion that went back and forth at the end of it. A comment was made that Major V was won by an overwhelming majority. If you go back and look at the figures, there were 8,734 possible voters that could vote in this town on that issue. Out of that, there were 400, I'm sorry, 4,043 that voted. And that's less than 50 percent that really voted. Out of that, 2,132 were in favor of Major V. That's fine. 1,911 were opposed to it. That total comes to 4,043. That's less than 50 percent. Now, when you say an overwhelming majority, I don't know where you get it. If they didn't vote, you can't count it. It can go either way. I can tell you a story and you can tell me a story, but if we don't vote, you don't have butcher marks down. So, I'm a little perturbed that, you know, when we come out with some of these things, the other issue that was brought up was that Mission Road was overdeveloped. I think everybody agrees. I've heard comments at the Planning Commission. There were things that we didn't see and maybe we were misled. I've heard sort of the same comments coming from council. Now, it's a little hard to say that a street that's normally 34 feet wide and goes to 28, how much impact is it going to be? Four feet to us, maybe the width of this table, doesn't look like a whole lot until we put it into practice. So, I think with that project out there, one comment that has never come out, or very seldom ever comes out, is the fact they came in with a certain number. I'll give you American Pacific's number as a fact. They came in with 86 places to put in. They want to put in. When they got through, they put 70 in. Now, 16 out of a project, sure, doesn't mean a whole lot, but you have to look both sides of the coin. If you take those 16 homes and say, "Yeah, we took it out," what's the cost that they lost? What's the cost that was put on the other homes for the cost of the total project? All the projects that went in there were less than they originally came to and I think several times, they came before Planning Commission and they came here and they were sort of denied, "You've got to cut it back, you've got to cut it back." And it was cut back. So, I would like to suggest that people do their work, homework, and look at some of these issues because if we make comments, then let's either back them up by fact or let's say they are comments. Let's not make, say something's overwhelming. If you are going to say overwhelming, fine. Let's define overwhelming and show figures. But this has gone on and I think Bob was right. At the workshops, I've been to most all of them that I was aware of that was open to public. Bob was right. Loma Linda University was there and they asked for homes for their moderate to lower-income employees to have a place to live and work here. You've heard it, Mr. Peterson's heard it. And they were at several of these workshops and I appreciate the time that was there. So, my request is, these are issues that are bridges under the water, or water under the bridge. Let's turn around and shake hands, drop things, these issues, and say, "Let's work together as a team." Several people that I've talked to in this town say they're getting a little fed up with this back and forth and I think now's the time and Mr. Rigsby said today, "We need to be united and work together." This is not working together. This is putting a wedge in things and I would hate to see this town have a wedge driven into it and divide this thing out and have people on one side and people on the other and then you get people going against each other. We don't need that in this town and that's not this town. This doesn't give a good look to people that are watching, people that visit, people that are out of town, guests that aren't members of this city or at other places to see this type of thing going on. This is a little bit of kids' play and let's grow up and get on board and have a good conversation and pull together and go, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Guess not the first time we've ever heard any of us as politicians stretching the truth. Everybody does have somewhat different viewpoints and sometimes things probably do get seen through different eyes and different interpretations, but your general admonitions make good sense. Any other items on the floor that would like to be brought up as non-scheduled items? I don't have any other slips. Seeing no other slips or no one coming to the dais, we will move on. First scheduled item we have is a public hearing and related to a project that a lot of us have heard a lot about and have a lot of interest in this community and that's related to a project that, and again, the architect's probably not the one to ask, but I have to admit, I'm still confused. I always knew this as the University Church of Seventh-day Adventists, but it seems like it's morphed into Loma Linda University Church and that's how we have it listed on our agenda. So, anyway, a slip I have for that is our architect that's been working on this project, Ken Schofield, and would like to welcome him and then before he comes forward, I'm sure Deborah and our staff will give an initial presentation and it looks like have some comments from council already, too.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict of interest on this issue. I'm a member of the church and contribute a certain amount of my income and so I will have to declare a conflict of interest.
Well, I'm a member there, too, so I guess the question is, I don't know how many are members, but do we need to draw straws on it?
I'm a member as well and I think, obviously, in that category, my direction will be led by what city attorney advises me to do. It's certainly not a source of income, so I'm not sure I see the conflict, but I will look to the city attorney to give us advice.
Well, as you indicated, there would not appear to be a financial interest where a member of the council is a member of a nonprofit organization, a church in this case. My understanding is none of the council members hold positions on board or officers of the church?
I am not a member.
Just a member.
And do all the members of the council attend that church from time to time as well?
I attend it regularly.
Well, I think under those circumstances, there's, this is an entitlement application and so there could be due process implications of what we call a common law bias, but it's shared equally and so drawing straws would not dilute any potential bias, but rather focus it, rather. If there's no objection from the public or the applicant or, I think in the absence of financial interests, you may participate. If you feel, each of you, that you can do so with an open mind and without bias and render your decision in the interests of the public in general.
Thank you for the advice and anyone from the council wishes to make further statements to not participate or recuse themselves based on that advice?
Being a member of the church for, gosh, more years than I can count, I have no problem with participating in the discussion.
Is it strictly a source of financial income or a source of, I mean, for example, if a person contributes to it, is it a fact that money or goods is changing hands or simply it's a source of income? And secondly, the way it's listed in here, it is the university church and I'm also employed at the university.
Well, my understanding is it's a separate entity from the university. Is that the case?
It's a little bit what I alluded to with my comments, you know, we're getting back into old time and some of us gray-haired individuals, but I've been around long enough that there were previous pastors and board members that very specifically felt the name University Church of Seventh-day Adventists showed the separate entity, that it was not a subset, was not controlled or owned by the Loma Linda University. I believe that's still completely true, but the names made it a little bit more confusing by, I think, calling it Loma Linda University. It sounds like it's part of Loma Linda University, but organizationally, anyone correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is organizationally it is a completely separate entity, even though the name can be at times a little bit confusing.
I think it's Southeastern Association of Seventh-day Adventists is the legal owner of the property and it's a different corporation.
Another question. Let's just say, as an example, let's supposing that this was a university project and all five members of the council worked for the university. By choosing, drawing straws, that wouldn't be diluting any potential biases there. So, if all five members have a conflict, then do you still have to draw straws and end up with three who have the conflict?
Yes. So, we'd probably, if the legal entities are connected, then you may want, we may want to fall back upon that procedure of drawing straws among those who have a financial interest with some portion of that overarching legal entity.
Because, I mean, the church owns...
The church legal entity is the Southeastern California Conference of Seventh-day Adventists, which is completely independent of the university, which is, at least in part, supported by the General Conference of Seventh-day Adventists in Maryland. So, I don't think that there's any crossover in corporate structure.
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest.
All right. Well, ultimately, that's an individual decision to be made, as we've done before.
The point Dusty just made is if you actually go back to the General Conference, the one institution that is the General Conference in the whole country is Loma Linda University. So, if you make that connection too strong, you actually have tied them together, maybe more than you intended. That would actually create more of a connection.
Well, there's a connection to everything through God's guidance, so I guess we can go all the way to the top.
But you were mentioning General Conference. I was getting a little more secular in the eyes of the world. If you mention General Conference, that is who owns Loma Linda University and the Medical Center. True?
Actually, it's owned by the community. Its board is, has a supermajority that's contained by leaders of the General Conference, yes.
In the General Conference yearbook, it is listed as a General Conference institution. Is that fair?
But it's, but under California law, yes, that's fair, but under California law, it's owned by the community.
Is tax exemption comes through the General Conference exemption?
Well, in an abundance of caution, you might want to follow our normal practice in dealing with LUESK-related institutions and draw the straws, but that's, of course, your decision to make ultimately.
I personally am not convinced that that's necessary. They are different organizations entirely. LUES does not constitute the board of the church. Church is owned by a separate entity and, again, I think just the way the name is, sometimes it's slightly confusing, but I don't think, in my mind, based on that information, that I perceive a conflict as advised by the city attorney. But if we do have one member of our council that feels it does, we may have to collectively consider the options and so forth, so.
You know, maybe we ought to follow the normal rule on that. From time to time, I've served on committees. One time, I served on the board. Maybe it's better in the, to follow the normal rules.
I have not been convinced that there's a conflict of interest in this at all. I don't think we need to draw straws. It's clear that we're all Seventh-day Adventists. At that point, we might as well recuse ourselves into anything that relates to any road that we may travel on. The conflict of interest is pretty clear. Are you going to financially benefit from the decision you're going to make? None of us get paid by the church. In fact, we pay the church, so I don't see any issue with this. All we're doing is confusing the issue and try to make a muck out of what should be a fairly straightforward system. This is an entitlement like any other one in our city. It just happens to be one of the churches that we're members of. I mean, we're going down a slippery slope here where anything that we have a connection to, I mean, we approved the academy. Most of us all graduate from there, most of us give money to the academy, suddenly now we have to recuse ourselves from that? I think we're just going down the wrong road here. This is a simple church addition, we happen to be members. If Mr. Peterson's uncomfortable with that, then he's more than welcome to accuse himself. I don't believe we need to be drawing straws on this.
Mr. Attorney, all five of us are members of the church. What if four of us were and one was a member of the St. Joseph, the Worker Church? What would happen then?
Well, we require three council members to constitute a quorum to act.
No, but my question is, if that was the case, then would we have a conflict of interest?
Well, conflicts are individually determined and so if four members declare a conflict, then you require two additional, two of those members to participate under the rule of necessity and so the four would draw straws and two would participate.
Mr. Mayor, if I might insert, this is a later project that's related to the project that was approved by the council, I think in 2003 or 2004. Might have even been a little bit earlier, but I processed that project and I, to be honest, I don't recall that any of the council members recused themselves at that time. So, if you want to look at past history as a, as setting the tone, that's possible.
I agree with your recollection and I think that's true based on my recollection. Anyway, I think we've discussed this enough. Obviously, we've had advisement from city attorney, we've rendered our opinions. I think it is up to each individual council member to make that decision, so we'll let, again, anyone declare a conflict if they perceive that and recuse themselves. If we need to do something to deal with the majority, then we will do that. So, Councilman Peterson has availed himself to that potential conflict and is recusing himself. Any others?
I'll do the same.
Okay. Councilmember Ziprick. Anyone else? I am, again, not convinced from the previous information discussed that I need to, so I think it's appropriate for me to participate and anyone else feel differently? That's part of the quorum. City attorney comfortable with that conclusion of the matter?
Yes. You may proceed with a quorum of three, keeping in mind that it will require three affirmative votes to approve any resolution or action.
Well, life's always interesting. Back to Ms. Waldorf with staff presentation or further comments related to this project.
We do have a presentation, Mr. Mayor, council. The project is Precise Plan of Design Number 0965 and it is a proposal that involves demolition of an existing chapel area and construction of a substantial addition to the existing Loma Linda University Seventh-day Adventist Church facility. The project is located at 11125 Campus Street, which is just south of University Court in the institutional zone and the institutional land use designation of the city's general plan. Let's see if I can do this backwards. Here's a site location map for those of you who are not familiar with where the church is located in Loma Linda. Some statistical information, as I mentioned, it's in the institutional zone. The site, subject site is 3.66 acres and there is an existing 22,200 square feet of sanctuary, existing classrooms, 26,625 square feet, and an existing chapel of 3,300 square feet, which will be demolished. And the site is located generally within the Loma Linda University campus. The proposal, as I mentioned, is to demolish the existing 3,300 square foot chapel. And did I skip a slide? Nope. We do have some pictures of the chapel building that will be demolished. Basically, it's this building and it does not include the classroom building here, so we have it here, 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 and kind of at the side there. That is the only portion that will be demolished. The intent is to construct 21,500 square feet of church addition, which will include the new chapel and associated improvements onsite and off, landscaping, street improvements and so forth. There will be multi-level construction because there are several stories associated with the new chapel building. It will be intended for multipurpose uses and there will be an additional 674 seats available within the sanctuary. That's a little confusing. The new facility will provide 900 seats, but the aggregate after you demolish the existing facility, basically, there's 674 new seats. Here is a site plan showing you the worship area that will be built right here. And a perspective view from the campus. As you can see, the architecture is... As you can see, the architecture is very modern and intended to complement the recent work that was done on the main church building. Elevations from the west and north and the south and east. This is the basement area, which will include changing rooms and storage area. The storage area in the future may be designated for some other uses. At this point, it has not been identified as to what that use would be, and it will remain storage until that time occurs. And the applicants are aware that if they come up with a new use, that they'll come in and do a tenant improvement through us. And parking is not a concern. We've calculated the parking requirements for this project to include that. Generally, we're looking at sanctuary and/or religious facility type uses, so we're not too concerned about that. This is the ground floor where the sanctuary would be, and you can see where the seating will be. Another unique feature is the mezzanine, and the mezzanine will provide access to the tower facility that you might have seen on the elevations. I'll go back to that. You can see it here, but I think it's a little clearer on this. So there's the tower facility. So you come across here. So that's kind of a nice, unique feature. The project will go a long way towards increasing the facility to accommodate the current congregation, and staff is satisfied that we've reviewed it and conditioned it appropriately and looked at it from an environmental standpoint. The applicant's representative and architect is here, and if the council would like, they are available to speak and answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, I would like to invite Mr. Schofield, the architect, to come forward and present additional information that he would have, and then give the council opportunity to ask questions. Mr. Schofield.
Thank you, Council. My name is Ken Schofield. I live at 1355 Page Lane in Redlands. I work for Onyx Architects out of Pasadena, and I'm also a member of the church. So we're got a great group here. We have a good problem at the church, and that is that our university-aged congregation portion is growing at a very strong pace, and we have actually nearly 600 members in that age group. The current chapel, what was designed for this purpose, seats 250 if you're real cozy with each other. So they have not been able to utilize the existing chapel for some time now, and they have bounced back and forth between the Juan Curly Conference Center, Chan Auditorium at Loma Linda Academy, and just have been kind of almost nomads on campus. Our goal is that we are the university church and that we are there because of the university and those attendees at the university. So we are excited to go forward to bring them a facility that they can all meet in at one time on a regular basis on the campus. The chapel also serves other things than just for this university group. We also hold weddings, funerals, vespers, and musical events that don't require the nearly 2,000 seats that we have in the sanctuary. So we see it as not just meeting the need for the university, but also many other uses, even for the community and the university. Debra mentioned about parking, and one of the questions that first came up in Planning Commission was, well, we're really going to have a lot, an increase in population on weekends and things. The fact is, these people are already on the campus, using the parking. They're just in different buildings. So we're bringing them now back to our campus facility. So that's, the parking will be as it is now, and utilizing the parking garages and things that the university has an agreement with the church to use on those events. The exciting part that's come with not only developing a larger meeting hall for these folks is that the existing chapel, as you could see from the existing photographs, really has a kind of a anonymous, sort of a bland appearance to the neighborhood and the community. And the idea with this building, it almost came as a second design feature, was the approach, archway, entry into the entire church campus. And we're very excited about taking the picture that you see, say, in the center on the right. That is the current face that we put out in our entry corner of the church to the public. We are very excited about changing that and even looking at a potential water feature on that corner. Again, the university actually is putting in the cul-de-sac that showed on the site plan. That is their project, and we will build off of that. That will be constructed once Stewart Street is back open again. I just read something recently online that Stewart Street is supposed to be open in February of 2009. So you can see, we're a little behind schedule on that one. But it's coming up soon. They're doing some curb and gutter right now, if you drive by. So I think that pretty soon we'll get Stewart Street back up and open, and then university will then be back to its pedestrian level usage with a cul-de-sac. So this will, in a sense, mirror what happens at the dental school with the drop-off zone on this end, give a drop-off space. And you can see, we have this kind of an entry sequence that comes up with some stairs and ramps up to the lawn level, which is then brings you onto the campus proper. The other element of the design concept is that you can see what goes on in this building. You can see people on the balconies and at the entry, and the lobby opens up to the lawn so that we see the activity of these university folks, which, again, adds a lot of vitality and vigor to the church in general. So we're very excited about the project. We've been moving ahead with the church and have a lot of good support there. And as members, you may not have seen much about it yet, but I think that's, the cat's kind of out of the bag right now, so that's probably going to be coming up more in a presentation mode. So I'm available for questions, if you have anything specific you wanted to ask.
I just wanted to echo your comments, and you're right. I'm surprised. I had heard about the expansion, but never actually seen the details of it, and I'm very, very pleasantly surprised how good it looks. In fact, I think one of the problems we're going to run into is people are actually going to think that that's the church as they walk in. But I can attest to the issue involved. I've been attending there since graduating from Loma Linda Academy, and the collegiate part of the Sabbath School has grown. It's gone up and down over the years, but recent, the last three or four years, we've gotten a new pastor by the name of Tim Gillespie. That number has increased tremendously. And I recall talking to him, and he talked about the fact that they have to turn away many kids who don't come to church primarily because they don't have a place to sit. So I think it's great that we're able to add to this and provide a better opportunity for people to be comfortable and attend. So I think it's a great project. You guys are doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Further questions of the architect? Comment, question, maybe you have another conflict? I'm proud to say the architect also designed my house, and I think he did a great job, just like he's going to do a great job and has done on this building. On the precise plan of design, don't really have much landscaping detail. Sorry, I'm always buff on trees and that kind of thing. Just throw it out for your comment. I've always wondered, we have, you know, on Campus Street, a nice row of ash trees and pine trees that give some western shade in the hot afternoon sun, but there's nothing right along where the church is. Is there any plans for that or thoughts that it would be better not to have any additional shade along campus? Just comments on that.
Well, one of the items that doesn't show very well here and that we really haven't finalized is we're also looking at the staff parking lot in general. That is part of our contract with the church, and we also would like to soften the asphalt curb to street type of approach. It's a little tough to squeeze some landscaping in. There's not a lot of extra room. One of the ideas with the corner is to interject, at least softening at the corner with landscaping and potentially a water feature, and then bring, in a sense, kind of a, what do I call it? Not an orchard, but a stacking of trees as you get to the end of the cul-de-sac and bringing you into the grass area. The church has found the grass area to be very valuable to them, and we're also considering maybe adjusting grade to even give them a little more surface area for their events that they do occasionally, and then tie that back into the walking street and make that a very functional connection. But Mayor Brower, I do appreciate your comments. It's nice to be able to park your car under a tree, especially in this time of year. So we'll be looking at seeing what we can interject along that street frontage. Part of that will be working with Public Works to see if we can get a little leeway because we have standard sections we work with, and this would probably take a little bit of a creative twist to get some trees in there.
Well, I know you'll look at the landscaping element and do a great job like you have with the building design, and that'll be a great improvement, whatever final configuration of that is. So thank you. Any other questions?
Quick question. I know there were plans to expand the other Sabbath School rooms. When you put this together, are you taking into account that those rooms eventually are going to have to be redone as well?
Yes, and that will be a Phase Three, if we want to call it that. Part of the reason we've singled this out is just because of the huge demand that's come upon us that was not expected. We had, intent, proposed to work the whole system in and include upgrading of the university and high school and the various levels of classrooms, but because of this acute need, we focused on this first, and then we'll come to the classrooms in the next phase.
All right. No other questions or comments from council. Thank you, Mr. Schofield. I have a slip from Fred Simontal, who I believe is, correct me if I'm wrong, Chair of the Building Committee or Chair of Board or both?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I am Fred Simontal, 3750 El Camino in San Bernardino. I am the builder for the church. I'm also the builder for the Loma Linda Academy Master Program, and we've been there for two years. I do want to tell the council that when I heard that the bridge was coming onboard, and we're building at the academy, and I just said, oh, we have to make some magic. I want to congratulate City of Loma Linda. I drove over the bridge at 6 o'clock. It was nice. Congratulations. We made everything work, and that's what I want to address the council. We have worked inter-campus with the students, there's traffic with Anderson and strategically. We do, we'll do the same thing with the university chapel. We are going to have to have pinpoint delivery times where we're not impacting the streets. We're going to have to look at it strategically to make all of the students that attend this university safe. We have a track record of two and a half years, inter-campus at the academy, 100%. We are, knock on wood, thank you. And, but I'm here to thank the planning department and Debra's department for the counsel that they have given us in planning this, and it's very exciting as we see the plans come out and fruteate.
Quick question. Do you have a timeline when it's going to be completed?
Well, we have probably a window from nine to maybe 12 months in that window. We're going to try to grab the opportunity. We do have demolition projections that we have to first demolition, build the basement, and then it's just like, then it becomes a new project.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is a public hearing item, and I would like to open this item for public input. Checking my slips, I don't believe I have any slips from the public, but anyone wish to address the council through the public hearing process? Now's your opportunity. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look to members of the council for direction and further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like to consider adding a condition regarding working with staff to enhance the street tree requirements around the perimeter on the street?
If you would indulge me, even though I'm mayor, I don't know, I guess it doesn't preclude me from at least asking for that to be a condition, if we can have that as just an understanding, to at least keep that item as a condition to be worked on together with architect and staff, and I know you will. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
If city attorneys are comfortable with just leaving it in that form, nothing more formal, we'll leave it at that, assuming we approve the project. If not, then it won't be an issue. Discussion direction from council. If we move forward with this, we do have a mitigated negative declaration and the PPD.
I moved we adopt the mitigated negative declaration. You want to?
Let's take them one item at a time, just to be complete.
So I moved that we adopt.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. If I could also add, obviously, this project's gone through Planning Commission, been approved at that level, and as Ms. Waldra indicated earlier, conceptual plan for the whole complex has been before the council as well, so there certainly have been many steps. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Now the precise plan of design with the landscape element as we mentioned.
Move it. Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 That is approved unanimously. Looks like a great project and look forward, as I'm sure everyone in the community does as well, to exciting things happening. Just to digress while the rest of the council's coming back, the tower element, one of those stories I'll never forget, you know, one of the best teachers I ever had, Dr. Provantia, telling the story about when he invited a Jewish rabbi to come visit the campus and was looking at the university church and looked at the tower and saw some things on the top of it, and the rabbi asked what the symbolism was of any of those objects, and Dr. Provantia had to unfortunately just tell them that they're just radio towers. But your tower element, I think, will be a very significant structural and unifying element, so it'll be great. All right. We'll move on to item H2, and this is related to a multifamily affordable complex that we will ask staff to begin with a report from Community Development. Ms. Waldra?
The project is Precise Plan of Design Number 0981, and as you mentioned, it is a proposal to construct 120 multifamily affordable units in five buildings constructed with either two or three stories. in five buildings constructed with either two or three stories. The project includes tot lots, children's play area, basketball court, barbecue area with picnic tables and benches. The project site is 6.5 acres and it's located on the east side of Poplar Street, south and adjacent to San Timoteo Creek Channel and north of Van Luben Street in the R3 multifamily residence zone. The project is also an RDA project through the Housing Coordinator's efforts. And it is also considered to be something of a later phase of the apartment building that is under construction at the north end of that site. Project site is shown here. And the apartment building that's already under construction is right in this area. Vacant 6.5 acre site, existing single-family and multifamily residential uses to the southeast and west. Existing channel, as I mentioned. And the parcel is adjacent to the 44-unit apartment building, which is also an affordable Existing photos, this one is looking east into the site. Here's the under-construction apartment building. And I believe this is looking into the center of the site where the drive aisle would enter. 120 units in five separate buildings. 60 units will include two beds with one bath, 800 square feet. And 60 units will be three bedrooms with two baths, 1,010 feet. And approximately 112,000 square feet of usable open space will be provided. The minimum requirement is for $90,000 for a project this size. Barbecue areas, picnic table, tot lot, children's play area, full-size basketball court. And the architecture is something of Mediterranean style. This is the site plan. And here's the existing apartment building and the five buildings with a lot of central area for open space. On this building, the Planning Commission had a concern about this long hallway. This is the building that's shown on the site plan at the front of the site facing Poplar. And as a result, the applicant made some changes in here so that the view is not quite as shotgun as it was previously. Elevations for, let's see, building one, building two, building three, four, and five. These are the materials and treatments that will be used on the buildings. Landscaping, you can see, is extremely intense with trees. I like that. Perspective drawings. I think the perspective drawings, for a change, actually reflect what's on the landscape plan and are not over embellishing. And the end. The project did receive environmental review and there was a mitigated negative declaration prepared. And the Planning Commission recommends that the project be approved and the mitigated negative declaration be adopted. There are findings and conditions of approval. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, along with Pam O'Cam, who worked on the project. And a gentleman from Corporation for Better Housing is also here.
Questions for Ms. Waldrath, for Ms. O'Cam, or any other staff members?
I didn't have a question per se. I just wanted to express my gratitude to the San Bernardino County Supervisors for assisting us with this project. This project would not have taken place if we hadn't received a $2 million grant. And I want to especially thank County Supervisor Neil Derry, who was instrumental in helping us get that grant. A lot of cities were competing for it and ourselves, and one other city got it. There is still some money left remaining, but I believe another city will be getting that. But once again, I think this is a great project for us to work towards meeting our affordable housing requirement. Individuals at home may not know that as the city grows, the state requires that we build 15% affordable housing. And we've, unfortunately, over the years, haven't done enough of that and we've put ourselves in a deficit. But with this project and the adjacent project, which is under construction now, we're going to more than decrease that deficit significantly. So it's exciting to be able to do that. Having lived in that area for many years, it's an area that has been fairly blighted and I believe that this project itself is going to assist us greatly in basically cleaning it up and making it more friendly for, I sometimes take my kids and go on bike rides along the creek area there. And I think to see houses there and trees and parks and people playing would be great. So look forward to seeing it built and having people move in.
All right. Councilman Peters?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, is there any possible, I don't know if trouble is the word I can use here, but is there any possible concern that we might have or that we could be taken a task on by having so many affordable housing units all in one spot? Is there some sort of a rule or law that you can't purposely segregate low-income, moderate-income housing all in one place in the city? Or is that a concern at all?
I think it would be if we were concentrating affordable housing in just one area. But we do have affordable housing throughout the north central neighborhood in pockets. We just don't have that much open land left to build larger projects. But Pam, I think, takes advantage of properties whenever she finds them. And so we do have them pretty well spread across the board. This is the largest concentration we have, I think, outside of the County Housing Authority, though.
That's correct. The other units are, they are single-family and homeownership. And outside of the Housing Authority, this would be the largest project in the area.
Just a couple of questions and comments. Again, as was mentioned, state requirements for affordable housing, we're under constant threat of litigation, it seems like, on all kinds of areas. And one of them has been us meeting those requirements. And this will, I think, hopefully, put us in a position that'll be very hard to challenge on that item. The question I have is, I think there always is legitimate concern of upkeep with affordable housing. What assurances do we have that these buildings and projects will be kept in top-notch condition and not become blighted? That's always potentially a concern.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I can briefly address that, but I can also ask our representative to come up and address it. The Corporation for Better Housing does have a very good reputation throughout Southern California for maintaining and managing the projects that they have built and own. They also participate in programs of, to work with local police departments to ensure that they have a, what's the certification, Pam? I forget.
It's the crime-free multifamily housing.
Right. And they have to go through training to screen people and they also get training on what to do when someone slips through the cracks or develops, say, a drug problem. And I think it's a no-tolerance policy.
With that?
But he's certainly able to go into further depth in that.
With that introduction, wasn't exactly meant that way, but let's use it as that. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, Justin Hart, Corporation for Better Housing. Just going off of what was recently said, Corporation for Better Housing, we're a long-term partner of the community. We have over 31 developments that are under operation over the last, I believe, 14 years of Corporation for Better Housing's operations, and we've never sold a development. We've also entered into a long-term leasehold with the RDA that owns the land. So should anything happen, we don't anticipate anything, the RDA and the city would have rights to cure it. One, we have a very stringent screening policy for each of our tenants. One of the major items that I like about these developments is that we have onsite management. We have managers that live onsite and we are constantly involved with the community through both Corporation for Better Housing and our onsite management. We become members of the community. These developments are meant to last for long periods of time. We, again, we've entered into, I believe it might be a 65-year leasehold agreement through the DDA with the RDA. So again, we are here for the long term and we work diligently to make sure that all the residents abide by our house rules and regulations, the pre-screening. We have several checks and balances in regards to that.
Yeah. Upkeep and landscape will be continually in progress, correct?
Affirmative.
Councilman Zifter?
As, how soon would this move forward if it's approved going forward?
I believe we are looking to start construction in the early part of November with a estimated approximate 12-month plus or minus construction period.
Do you believe there will be a demand for the units?
Absolutely. Currently, with our 44-unit development directly to the north, without any advertising right now through, I believe, just word of mouth, we have approximately between 45 to 55 people that have called our offices, whether it was through the city clerk's office or just people driving by and asking questions and, you know, looking into it. But approximately 45 to 50 people on our current interest list without any advertising.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your report. This is a public hearing. I do not have any slips from the public, but I will formally open the public hearing. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And just have one quick comment. You know, I've been on council a number of years and we were just talking about with the bridge project this evening. Been, you know, trying to work on that ever since I came on council in '92. And I think certainly affordable housing kind of fits in that category. Certainly had a lot more intensive efforts on this particular location and Ms. O'Cam deserves great credit for all her efforts. But I think this is one of those projects that, you know, really has been a 10- or 15-year plan that's, you know, moved agonizingly slow at times, but now it's exciting to see it gather speed and finally get to a fruition point that will be, I think, good for the community and good for a number of reasons that we listed. Further discussion direction from council?
Yes, I have one other question, and that is, since a good deal of this project is bounded by the San Tim Creek Trail, is there any reason why some improvements along that piece of the trail would not be part of the project? And I didn't remember seeing it in here.
No, so it's part of EPA grant project. This habitat is right adjacent to this project, so.
Right. But what I was wondering, yes, I know that the EPA money is going to do that, but I was wondering if perhaps this project shouldn't at least contribute even some additional to that or even some improvement beyond what the EPA would pay along that piece of the trail? I don't know.
They already do their landscape as part of their project to the north so that would be a little buffer and trees and between the apartment and the channel. So, yeah, we did talk about it at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, we did for the 44 unit and for this one. We worked with the Planning Commission to require that the landscaping at the perimeter next to the EPA grant area would at least complement and transition into it. So we've, I think, we've done what we can in terms of trying to tie the two together in a visual, in a visual way.
Any other discussion from council? If not, I'm ready for direction. And if we follow our previous item, I would look for direction on the mitigated negative declaration.
Mr. Mayor, I have one?
Yes.
Before you start your motions, I noticed that in motion number two for the adoption or approval of the precise plan, it talks about being subject to the attached conditions. I, my oversight, there are three additional conditions in the staff report that were added by the Planning Commission. And I would request that those conditions be added to the attached conditions of approval. So the motion just be modified to include those three conditions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Looking for?
I moved we adopt the mitigated negative declaration.
Second.
Along with attachment C.
With those conditions and attachments, as mentioned, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Now the precise.
I moved the precise plan of design number 09-81 based on the findings and subject to the attached conditions of approval, including the ones that were mentioned.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you. We move on to the consent calendar. I would like to pull item number seven, have some questions. And then maybe just real quickly on item six, not going to pull it, but I just wanted to give Chief Bender a chance to mention some of the activities of different fires that our departments responded to and even some questions, what was happening over Redlands this afternoon and just ask for his comments.
I might start with a flurry of fire activity that, sort of a couple of weeks ago, our crews began really their mutual aid responses up to Santa Rosa area. On return from those incidents, I think we immediately went into the Oakland and Pendleton fires. We do have one resource right now, a communication specialist attached as the management, part of the management team of the station fire in LA. Over the last several days, we've had a couple of structure fires in town and related to the Wildland incidents, completely incidents of their own. Today's activities, the column of smoke you saw to the east was about approximately 20 acres, City of Redlands Sunset and Helen Court, a country club area off of Sunset. I don't think they lost any structures in that. There were some with some minor damage per radio communication, I heard, and that hasn't been formally declared by the incident yet. But that's wrapping up. Resources actually are back in quarters now from that incident. So currently, we only have one single resource still attached to the station fire. We have some conference calls tomorrow morning outlining kind of the plan for the rest of the week as the winds and temperatures are expected to pick up. And I haven't seen the news reports later this evening, but we do have some significant incidents that are growing right now. A new incident in Fillmore area that likely we'll see, you know, more mutual aid requests to the LA Ventura if that fire grows. So quite a bit of activity. I think we've had excellent response from our off-duty personnel, anytime mutual aid response. We've been immediately able to fill our stations and keep the city covered as well. So I appreciate the response from our personnel and callback as well. It's been, it's been really outstanding, so.
Just a quick question. You mentioned that individual. You mentioned that individual with a station fire, and that's been, you know, long-term, relatively speaking. Do we get reimbursed from any entity for those expenses? I guess short-term mutual aid, that's not an issue, but if there's someone there for weeks and whatever, how does that work?
It does. In fact, a majority of our overtime costs are dollars that are reimbursed. Before we go on a mutual aid incident that's significant distance, we have an order number, a request number before we even leave the quarters that we understand where the paying, who the paying entity is, where those dollars were come from. It takes a little while for those to transpire, but we have completely, we're completely reimbursed from last year's fire activity. So they're a significant part of the incident. When I mention management team, we have a single person as part of a management team. This individual oversees communications, but also part of that management team, there are accounting sections, and it's literally like setting up a little, a little city, and those, those resources check in, resources check out, resources track expenses, and all those follow order and request numbers, and we assure before our resources leave that those numbers are in place, and really that is our key to reimbursement. Anything under twelve hours, generally those are those local, much like we were on today, City of Redlands, San Bernardino, Ucaipa, except, you know, of course, the Oakland fire that went on to an extended attack incident and became an OES and state-funded. And, you know, if that would have been, sometimes we see in the Crafton Hills, we're up there through the evening and back in quarters, as you mentioned, those aren't reimbursed incidents. Those are kind of what we do with our neighbors, and they do for us as well. But the extended attack, multi-day incidents like that, yes, we are reimbursed, and finance department and ourselves track that from the moment we're dispatched. We have a pretty good idea of what our reimbursement is.
Thank you for the report. I'm looking for direction on items three, three through six on the consent calendar since.
Move it.
Seven.
Second.
Moving second, and any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, passes unanimously. My question on seven, with the difficult financial times and so forth, I just have to ask about, you know, spending some of these funds for Heritage Park and so forth, whether this is the top of our list of priorities, and also assurance that our long-term plan for that park is well enough along that it makes sense to move forward with that, since there's some uncertainty with some of the land use in the surrounding areas. So those are my, my two questions I would like at least discussed briefly.
Yes, sir. The part of the project is to widen Mission Road to the north side of the street, which is the westbound. Right now, the street at that location has no, just edge of pavement, no curb and gutter or sidewalk. And the Mission Road at that location already have a landscape median, where at the end of the median to the west have a little kind of ball nose at the end, and the street right next to it kind of narrow, so we would like to widen the street at that portion in front of the Heritage Park. The reason I include just the portion of the parking lot to this project is because it's right next to it, and the price coming better when you have a bigger scale of the project as far asphalt go, curb and gutter, and sidewalk, and curb inside the parking lot. And I include a portion of fencing just in the front as permanent, and then surrounding the, temporary fencing surrounding the Heritage Park itself, which is just going to be a chain-link fence, just to protect the three buildings that we have and the locomotive. And that's, that's all we plan to do at this time.
And this has certainly been through Parks Committee as far as configuration of where the structures and facilities are, and at this point in time, there is approval and consent that that is the direction they would like us to head.
Yes, sir. We went through the park committees and also historical committees of both, and they also approved the site where the house are placed, you know, the couple, two houses, and also the locomotive, and that was completed.
Yeah, two questions, well, maybe I guess it's just one, and that is, yeah, where, where are the funds coming from to do this?
This is RDA.
Okay, that's all, that was my question. That was my, so, then why wouldn't this be in the RDA agenda?
The city is.
I'd like to call a meeting of the redevelopment agency to order.
Quick thinking.
It's one of those things that the multiple hats do seem to overlap. Councilmember Papesk, you?
I, our clerk also reminded us that it's the city property, so that's part of the reason. We're using RDA funds to help redevelop city property. You brought up some concerns regarding priorities and whether this is really our priority, and it's something that we discussed ourselves in the RDA executive committee, and we looked at other things the money can be used for. We had some issues with a timing as far as the money needed to be spent before we, it expired. I think another concern you had was how does that fit with what the overall plan for that area is? And from my understanding, after we passed the general plan and looked at the whole area as a whole, one of the nice things we did is approve a plan in concept that we would have about sixty acres of open space. The goal is eventually to try to tie in some of that open space with this park. So I, from my understanding, I don't think it's going to really get into the way of, with any other plans that may come along or changes of property lines. One question I did have, and of Jarb, was the amount of money being spent, is that, is that just for the parking lot and the curb and gutter and improvements of the road? Is any of that money going towards landscaping as far as grass, trees, and just general green area?
Right now, the, what you award tonight is only for the hardscape, you know, the asphalt curb and gutter and sidewalk, but because the bid coming so well that we do have the money remaining in the budget, that if you want to do in the future, we can do the landscape and bid the landscape portion.
Do you recall how much we actually allocated for that park at this point? Was it two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Close to it, yes. I'm sorry, I have that number in front of me, but.
But you believe there's money left over?
Oh, yes, yes, the bid coming, very reasonable, I was surprised.
Okay, thank you.
Again, but my question is, and I've been on this council twenty years, and I'm just trying, I'm trying to recollect. If the money is RDA money that we're going to spend, does at least the spending of the money have to be in the RDA budget?
It is, it is in the budget.
I mean, but do we have to, I mean, does it have to be on an RDA agenda in order to actually allocate the money or spend it? Or since it's already in the budget, we can do it from here without doing it in the RDA side?
Well, because the council approved a budget, it's a whole.
Right, well, and the, and the, and the RDA approved the RDA budget, so we're okay that way.
The city council and the agency jointly approved the, an agreement between the city and the agency for certain capital improvements, and the agreement allows the agency to fund the improvements. So that agreement has already been approved.
Got it.
And this just awards the contract to fulfill the improvement itself.
Got it, got it.
I think it's a good thing to move forward on this. One of the things that has been mentioned by some of the citizens and those who've served on committees is that the area there, the Heritage Park, will eventually become derelict, and things will happen to the structures that are there if they're not put to use. And so one of the things that would make it move forward is if you get the hardscape in, if it begins to look frankly more occupied and the city's controlling it, and we might be closer to some of the clubs and things who would like to use it, being in a position that, we're not there yet, but it definitely moves us a lot closer. And cost of oil is down right now. If you're doing paving and asphalt, this is a good time to do it.
All right, I think we had some questions answered, and we didn't really talk about seven B. I don't think there are any questions, but we'll just, if the council's ready for approval of item seven, which includes both.
I'll move it.
Second.
Item seven on the consent calendar that was pulled has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We have item number eight, and that's related to Appeal Planning Commission's decision on wireless facility in area Leonard Bailey Park. This was continued from July eighth and will be continued to October thirteenth. It's not technically a public hearing, but since it is interest of the community, if there's someone here that absolutely cannot be here on the thirteenth, would like to briefly comment, give you that opportunity. If not, we will move on. Seeing none. Item number nine was related to a settlement agreement that has been before this council and been discussed, and various actions taken at the last several meetings. I'm going to, with consent of the council, move this to our last item, and just for flow of items. The next item is item number ten, and listed as new business, but it seems kind of like old business. Obviously, talked about this many a time over many a year, and this is a discussion and direction related to our agreement with red flex traffic and, for common terminology, red light cameras, and I'm sure we'll have some strong opinions on this and may have differing opinions, but that can be good.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm somewhat dependent on technology for this. I had a slide presentation, and we'll see if we can pull that up. Very good. Can we go back to the first slide? Okay, I guess support was the first slide, so. Okay. Red light cameras have supporters and they have detractors, and I tried to, I tried to ask people why they support them, and the three best responses I get, and not in the order presented, because revenue generation is something seldom admitted to as a, as a reason for supporting it, so it's, it's more like it's, it's an accompaniment of it, but not necessarily the driving force. Safety is usually the reason people would like red light cameras, and the evidence shows that red light violations decrease quite a bit in the year and following years after placing the red light cameras, so then it would follow logically that accidents should decrease also. And there are some people who just like to see that people who are out there breaking the law finally get their day, and they deserve some punishment for that. And, you know, I've had people tell me, the people who keep turning left after the light turns red, they really annoy me, I can't get through the intersection, and they, and they, they want those people to get a ticket. For revenue generation, they improve city general fund without tax increases, and they've allowed us in the past to hire some more police officers, so they have some positive side effect in that, in that regard. The next slide. The people who oppose them, there are many reasons, and I'll go through them. People are, a lot of people are annoyed, they're ticketed for minor violations with very high fines, and they're quite angry about it. It's not necessarily good for business to have your visitors hit with a three-hundred-and-sixty-dollar fine for having visited our fair city, whether it's to one of our health institutions or one of the other tax revenue generating businesses. The locals have a, have a way of figuring out after a while that you stay away from these intersections or you approach them very cautiously, so the bulk of the fines in the later years of these contracts tend to go to visitors. Next. The fines, as have, has been reported recently in the press enterprise, the fines are three-hundred-and-sixty dollars roughly for the first, first offense, and it's the same fine whether you blow through the red light at ninety miles an hour when it's been red for twenty seconds, or whether you just creep around the right turn, the famous California roll. So it's disproportionate, and Councilman Peterson, I think, was quoted in the press enterprise as saying he's concerned that three-hundred-and-sixty is a bit steep as a first offense, and for a creeping right turn, I think everyone would be happy with a much lower fine, but the state of California governs that, and apparently the city of Corona is trying to find out if they can assess administrative fines and avoid the entire court system and therefore give the right turns a smaller fine. If that, if that were found to be legal in the state of California, it'd be interesting if we, if we could avail ourselves of that avenue. The other is that it's really a pathetically inefficient fundraiser for the city. There have been millions of dollars in fines paid by violators in Loma Linda since our contract went into effect almost four years ago now. The city initially got less than thirty percent of the total fines. Our take currently is, is considerably less than thirty percent. Red Flex gets by contract, I believe, about six thousand dollars per approach per month as a minimum, and the county courts, insurance companies that raise people's insurance rates, and traffic schools get most of the rest. So the, it's, if somebody was in the category of saying that this is a great, a great way to raise money for the city, those people would be disappointed by our current returns. Okay, next. One of the biggest reasons people support them is because they decrease accidents, and the, the science, the evidence is not very supportive of that conclusion. Most well-conducted studies show that red light cameras increase overall accident rates and not just rear enders. The rear enders go up tremendously because of people slamming on their brakes, but many studies show a statistically significant increase in T-bone accidents and, and all the other different scenarios that might occur in accidents at the intersections. And to that, in that direction, I've provided the council with a study roundup of some of the, some of the studies that have been done, and to me, the most fascinating one is the one that I've labeled item number six. If there's anybody in the, in the audience who would like to see this, we've got it available for you afterwards, and I've got the larger summaries of each one of these items available as well. But item number six is an interesting study that was conducted in North Carolina a number of years ago. It was, at that time, the only controlled study that had been done. A lot of, a lot of red light camera studies that are done that, that purport to show decreases in accidents, they don't study the same intersection beforehand and then afterwards, after replacing, or placing the red light cameras. What they do is they study an intersection with red light cameras from the point that they install them and then compare them to another intersection in town that doesn't have red light cameras. So there's very poor control, very poor ability to draw any conclusions from the studies. This study showed a very interesting thing, and what I'd like to do is read the executive summary of this. It's about one page, if you'll allow me. This paper analyzes the impact of red light cameras on crashes at signalized intersections. It examines total crashes and also breaks crashes into categories based on both severity and by type. Prompted by criticism of the simplistic methods and small data sets used in many studies of red light cameras, we relate the occurrence of these crashes to the characteristics of signalized intersections, presence or absence of red light cameras, traffic, weather, and other variables. Using a large data set, including twenty-six months before the introduction of red light cameras, we analyze reported accidents occurring. we analyze reported accidents occurring near 303 intersections over a 57-month period for a total of 17,000 observations. Employing maximum likelihood estimation of Poisson regression models, which only Floyd understands, we find that the results do not support the view that red light cameras reduce crashes. Instead, we find that red light cameras are associated with higher levels of many types and severity categories of crashes. An overall time trend during the study indicated that accidents are becoming less frequent, about 5% per year, and that's in the other intersections in that state. However, the intersections where red light cameras were installed are not experiencing the same decrease. When analyzing total crashes, we find that red light cameras have a statistically significant P less than .001 and a large 40% increase effect on accident rates. In addition, red light cameras have a statistically significant positive impact on rear end accidents, side swipes, and accidents involving cars turning left traveling on the same roadway. The one type of accident found to experience a decrease at red light camera sites are those involving a left-turning car and a car traveling on a different roadway. When accidents are broken down by severity, red light cameras are found to have a statistically significant P less than .001 and a large effect, 40 to 50% increase, on property damage and only, on property damage only, and possible injury crashes. There was a positive but statistically insignificant estimated effect on severe, fatal, evident, and disabling accidents. These results run contrary to the many studies in the red light camera literature. Previous studies have sometimes found an increase in rear end accidents, but often find offsetting decreases in other types of accidents. While this study incorporated many advances in methodology over previous studies, additional work remains to be done. Because accident studies rarely use a true experimental design and data are not perfectly observable, additional careful study of red light cameras is warranted to verify our results. This was published in 2005 and was based on data obtained in the early 2000s. There's a roundup that I've presented to the city councilman of a number of studies that, since that time, that have confirmed a lot of the results. The decreases in accidents that are hoped by these and by having people subject to citation for breaking the law, the decrease has not occurred. And in the explanations in that article, they speculate that it could be because most red light camera violations, in fact, in most studies, about 80% of red light camera violations on the straight, the people who run straight through, 80% of them are within one second of the light turning red. And it usually takes longer than that for a car in an opposite lane to enter the intersection once they get a green. So the violations that occur and the violations that diminish over time because people get used to the cameras tend not to be accident-causing or dangerous violations in the first place and would probably warrant having some kind of a grace period so that the tickets are not issued for those who violate with less than half a second or some variation on that. And there's some speculation that people go to red light camera controlled intersections and would be slightly less diligent about looking back and forth for opposing traffic because, you know, people don't run these lights anymore. People who cause accidents in those intersections, according to these studies, tend to be people who blow through the intersection five seconds or more after it turned red, and those are people who are distracted by some kind of object in the car, by conversation, or by texting, or telephone conversations. And these are people who aren't, aren't going to be impressed by a light flash as they, as they go through the intersection at 55 miles per hour. We'll get a nice picture of them, but that doesn't bring the family that they T-boned back. So the, after that discussion of accident increases, there, the university, not university, but Texas Transportation Institute in a 2004 study found in its item 10 in your handout, that if you lengthen yellow lights by one second, you reduce the number of violations by approximately 70 to 80% because, at least on the straight ones, I'm not talking about the right turn violations, which are minor and almost never cause accidents. But if you, if you increase the yellow light by cannibalizing the green, not increasing the entire cycle length, that you decrease straight-line violations by 70 to 80%, and you decrease accidents by 40%. And it's much more effective than red light cameras, much less obnoxious to the community, and avoids a lot of the other issues that I brought up in my presentation. So what I'd like to propose, I guess we can have a discussion, then I'll come up with my proposal.
All right. Thank you for introducing that item, and I'm sure we'll have some further discussion. So some directions we could move. I guess I will put our sheriff's representative on the spot just to kick things off. Obviously, we've heard some studies that have questioned some of the safety and so forth. I remember a review after the first year of installation of the cameras. Our sheriff's representative at that time gave us statistics that we'd had significant reductions in number of accidents in that first year at those intersections. And so I'm puzzled, obviously. Any study and any methodology can come to different conclusions in different locations, but is that your understanding, at least that first year and so forth, we actually saw a decrease, significant decrease, in number of accidents? Or am I recalling that incorrectly?
No, absolutely. The information that I received is that there was a significant decrease in accidents. And after that, it has leveled out. For me to give you an accurate answer, I would have to go back and research and actually draw some statistics at each intersection.
My recollection is that there was, there was a reduction, and whether it was significant or not, I think would be left more to statisticians, but I think that the N's were too small to, to, to put a statistically significant qualifier on it.
We'll let Floyd weigh in. That's perfect segue for him.
Well, the first, as I recall, the report that came out after the first year was, and I could be wrong, but my recollection is that we could not attribute one accident to the red light camera being there. That was my recollection of it during the first year. One quick word about the Poisson regression. You typically get a Poisson distribution when you count things, and accidents are counting things. And so that's where, that's, it's not a normal typically a distribution, it's a Poisson. But anyway, that's leave it at that. I, that was, what I would like to see, and a number of people have asked me, and I've promised them this, and I'm sorry, I've been, I've been negligent in doing that. I do think that we need to have a report here back in city council as to what is happening like now over the past year. I have always said I would be the most happy council person alive if we never gave a ticket at any of those intersections, just like I'd be the most happy council person alive if not one fire truck ever left the station. That's not what they're there for. Never, ever in my mind was putting these things in having anything to do with raising revenue. I know that every year I go down and talk to the kids at the academy, and they say, every year they always ask me about the red light cameras. I said, there is only one reason why I voted to put them in. I want to see you graduate from high school. And I'm, I'm, I would be delighted to see that we're not giving any more tickets. Now, somebody in the press did call me a while ago about it, and there is a couple of things about those red light cameras that do bother me, and that is, I think that in some circumstances, that we don't have any control over the fines. And I do think that people in this town are pretty susceptible to warnings. And I think, I do think that the first time fine on a, on a right turn of $360, I think that's, that's just out of line. I mean, I think that's crazy. Unfortunately, we have no control over that. But...
Mr. City Attorney, do you have any updates in legal circles on the status of that Corona action? I think a number of us have been following that. You know, we are, I think, all a little frustrated by the inflexibility of state law and curious where that is at the moment.
I have not had any discussion with the Corona folks, and I'd, but I'd be happy to look into that for you.
I'm sure it'll be reported in the press when they, when they come to a conclusion on it, but it'd be nice to get an inside track.
Yeah, I think definitely have a consensus to ask for some reporting on that. Councilman Zipper?
Well, I, I think we all share the same sentiments. When I voted for it, it was really only on safety, and as far as I'm concerned, if, if they never raised $1, it'd be fine. That would be the best result. The report I recall from the sheriff several years ago was that the accident rate dropped in half of the four intersections, and that the intersections that did not have them had all increased, and that there was no accident attributable, like what they would consider a rear ender due to the red light cameras. But it's been some time since we had a report, and it might be appropriate to have another report come in. Certainly, I agree with the sentiment on the red light turns. I thought, I remembered from the representative who spoke on it at that time for the sheriff's department, that when they were reviewing it, they tended to go a little easier on the right turns. And I'm trying to recall, because I know it gets reviewed, and people have a right to explain circumstances. There was a review process they talked about, but I think it'd be good to hear that maybe as part of a report.
Yes, and it's also my understanding that still there is a, there is a, the person who is reviewing them, he's quite lenient in regards to several of the violations.
So it sounds like we're asking for a further report on some of the legal developments and then a more comprehensive report from sheriff on that. If I can just interject one thing, I think I related my little personal story in the last month. I sold a car, and two weeks later, I got a red light ticket in the mail attached to that car, unfortunately, clearly, it's not me driving it, and was over in Pomona, but I did have the, have the experience to review online since it was sent to me, the video, and it was, you know, definitely the rolling, you know, for lack of a better word, California rolling red light violation. And I would estimate it was moving close to 10 miles an hour through that light. Looking at the ticket I got, explanation, you know, again, we can debate it. I know lots of interpretations of how, whether that's a real safety hazard, but on that ticket clearly spelled out that the whole intent and reason that you have to come to a full and complete stop is the hazard to pedestrians, and people can never examine the sidewalks without coming to a complete stop to ensure pedestrian safety. So I found that interesting to have that explanation on that, for that. Doesn't seem like that potentially is hazardous, but anyway. Further discussion in the comments.
Well, currently, the, the, well, at least a year ago, about three-quarters of the violations were the California rolls, the right turns, and that was the bulk of, of the revenue. And when, when the sheriff's office was approached about, by me and by others, about, about being a little bit more lenient on those, because we came up with incidents where people were down to about, they couldn't have been going more than half a mile per hour when they got to their slowest point that were getting tickets, when they did implement a more lenient approach, and the main effect that's had is that it pretty much vitiated or eliminated any net revenue for the, for the project. So the violations have dropped a bit, and I haven't received as many complaints about, about overinterpretation of those. However, the issue still exists that there's disproportionate fine, $360 plus other fees and, and traffic school and insurance increases and things that make it quite difficult on, on the people. And there, there aren't very many accidents from those acts, from, from those. And, and I believe in, Floyd actually said in the article on the Press Enterprise that if we reduced the fines on those, that his opinion was that it was probably in violation of our contract because it would reduce the revenue to our supporting agency, Red Flex. So...
That, that's the next element, you know. I think we need report from the sheriff on, you know, our incidences and explanations of some of these, the legal development. And then I guess my other question was related to that. Where, where do we stand with our agreement? My recollection, we had a five-year agreement.
It's about a year.
Not sure where we stand. So it's, I think it's appropriate that we do have some reports and updates and look at some of these things. Councilman, put this.
I know there's a lot of concern about possibly reducing the fines, but I recently received a speeding ticket, and I was shocked to see how expensive it was on the freeway, and it was $350, and that was just for speeding. And given the budget situation in the state, I don't see any chance whatsoever the state is going to decrease any of those fines. They need every dollar they can get. So that's a different argument. But for me, I have a different perspective of it, and my perspective is that initially when the cameras were put in, you know, people noticed them, and then suddenly a few people started getting tickets, and then it became a big issue. And when I campaigned a year ago, it, oh, I was shocked to see how upset most people were about it. And I have been now on the council for a year, and I think I get a complaint about it almost once a month. And I know that we have a responsibility to try to reach decisions that will improve the overall safety of the public. However, there is already some methods put in place to try to reduce that. We have police officers who can catch people. We have laws. We've got the stoplight itself that prevents people from going through it. Some people may choose to go through it, some people may not. So there's only so much we can do to try to improve safety. To me, it's more of a philosophical role, which is, I don't think that I'm smart enough to come up with every single scenario or come up with the best idea for anything that we do here. However, what I do know is that I'm here to represent the folks. And if majority of the folks do not like a particular decision, I have no choice but to try to either decide that I need to listen to them because they, I represent them, or decide that I'm smarter than them and tell them that, tough it. I'm going to have to teach you a lesson, and you're going to have to pay the fine, and I am not willing to listen to anything else because I have made up my mind about what these things do. I am here to represent the citizens, and majority of the citizens that I've talked to do not like these cameras and would like to have them removed. I have gotten phone calls at home about people who are so upset about this. And I think that these things should have been addressed some time ago. And, you know, taking statistics at school taught me that having data on four intersections over four years is probably not going to be as statistically significant as having data from a university who does it over hundreds of intersections over multiple years. So my take on a design, most likely to believe statistics that come from an actual study that truly analyzes each accident before the camera was put in and afterwards. I'm not sure that we have the capability to really do a study within our city, a controlled study by a true statistician, other than just counting the fact that we have over a certain period of time this camera in place, we have X amount of accidents after the camera's been put in, we have X amount of decreased accidents. Well, when you do studies, it doesn't work that way. You're going to have to have a control group. There's a lot of circumstances may dictate as to whether, whether the, whether the accident was caused by the traffic light... caused by the traffic light camera or by something else. So I'm not personally moved by any study that may come from the Sheriff's Department regarding the city. Once again, I truly believe that I'm here to represent the citizens, and the citizens do not like these, and I am very much in favor of removing them.
We've definitely heard variants of opinions. I think at least have a consensus, as I've heard it on the three items that we've mentioned. Unless I'm hearing otherwise, I'm not sure we're ready for any further action or direction. Is there a consensus by the council that we get status on our contract, the legal update from Corona, and then further reports from the sheriff? Any additional items or obviously council's prerogative for other activities besides just bringing those reports back as well? Councilman Peterson, did I see your hand? And then, Mayor Protim?
Yeah, all I was going to say is, I've been on this council now over 19 years, and before the cameras went in, I probably got six complaints a month about people going through red lights, and we've got to do something about that. I mean, that was probably some of the biggest complaints that I have gotten, the most numerous complaints of traffic in the city, is people going through the red lights and simply just ignoring what was happening.
And I would actually agree with you that, part of the reasons, one of the things I wanted to mention is that I suspect we probably had a higher incident of people running through red lights because traffic has gotten pretty bad. And people do get pretty frustrated at some point, and they said, I'm not going to wait for another light. If you go down Anderson now, you literally have to wait for three or four lights, and it's obvious that some people were violating that. I think some of that may come back again, but however, the camera, the red light cameras were placed at major intersections, and I believe in spite of what many claim that it was done to decrease safety, I think it was done to increase revenue. I see it happening throughout Southern California. It's an easy way for cities to generate revenue, even though it's inefficient. But I think that if we want to improve the overall safety of our intersections, the best thing we can do is improve our roads. Because we haven't done that for the last 20 years, we've had to resort to penalizing people for doing, for what many of them is really minor violations, and I just think it's unfair.
Mayor Protim?
I would like to make a motion. It has two components. We can treat them separately or together up to the city council attorney. Number one, instruction to staff to investigate our options to terminate our contract with Red Flex prior to the five-year expiration of the current contract. And number two, lengthen the yellow light durations by one second in all approaches served by red light cameras, cannibalizing the green, not affecting the total cycle time.
If it is acceptable to the maker of the motion, as mayor, I would like to separate those two items. So let's take the first. We have an action that's been moved to investigate our options with where we stand with our Netflix or Red Flex, I should say, contract and possible termination.
Just to investigate our options.
The action's been moved. Councilman Zipper, if I have a second?
For sake of discussion, could we broaden that to include a report from the Sheriff's Department on the performance?
That's a friendly amendment.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't have a problem investigating everything, the Corona issues, all the things we talked about. Because I think that would be, that'd be a fair way to allow it to be discussed. You know, I'd support it if we, I'll make that as a friendly amendment.
Or if I can have the permission of the individual that made the motion to include that in your original motion?
Yes.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
And maker of the second? All right, those will be included in that action. Any further?
Just clarification. Was this item not open to public? Does anybody from the public want to speak?
It's not a public, public hearing, but I'm more than glad, you know, we have, obviously, always tough to know how much item, time we should devote to this, but certainly if it's the, if anyone has any pressing comments, please, just encourage it. Try and make them short, minute or two if possible, since it's not a public hearing. Yes.
My name is Elmer Kelln. I live at 25246 Lawton. I was here the night the sheriff made his presentation, and if you were here, you'll recall, you'll never forget it, because he kept on going and kind of had to be cut off. But as I remember it, it decreased broadside accidents but increased rear-end accidents. But again, I want to remind people of Loma Linda City Council that we are a host city. Hundreds of people come in here every day that have never, ever been here before because they heard about us and the good things we do. And it seems that a little bit of courtesy should be given to these people. They spend thousands of dollars here, and I've heard a lot of complaints about the red light, primarily on the right turn. After looking into it, someone told me, you have to stop, count to three, and turn right. If you stop and count to one and turn right, you're going to get a letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christiansen?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mike Christiansen, 25241 Cottage Street. I'm very, very pleased that you're bringing this issue to the fore. Former Mayor Peterson, you stated on many occasions that Loma Linda is an experimental town, and I think it's high time that we experiment on booting out big government. I'll go through this very, as quickly as possible. I got a ticket from this that showed that I was looking in all directions. It said that I was going 15 miles an hour as I turned right, and I don't recall. And when the presentation was made, it was stated categorically, this does not target right-hand turns. I wanted to know where the speed gun on the camera was. Okay, this is guilty with a flash until it's reviewed, and then you are proven innocent. You're guilty when that flash goes off until it is reviewed and someone decides this is not prosecutable. That goes contrary to the Constitution. It's an illegal search and seizure of evidence. Red Flex is in Arizona. This evidence is electronically extradited out of state without a court order, and it's a violation of the Fifth Amendment of self-incrimination. I appreciate very much the direction that you're taking. Thank you.
I can actually answer the question about where the camera is, where the speed thing is. On the approaches to these intersections, there are two rectangular boxes where wires are strung. They're a specific distance apart, and they calculate how long it takes you to get from one to the next, and they calculate your speed. They've set the cameras so that they only turn on and videotape and flash you if you're going 15 miles per hour or faster when you cross those boxes. They're quite a bit back from the intersection, maybe 50 feet or so. I'm not exactly sure of the distance. But the dirty little secret of these devices is that if you cross that threshold at 15 miles per hour, slow down to 0.5 miles per hour and creep around the intersection, you could be given a ticket. If you cross those boxes at 14 miles per hour and then proceed to floor your vehicle and roar around the intersection at 60 miles per hour, the camera is off. It doesn't even know you're there. So when they talk about, we don't enforce any violations less than 15 miles per hour, that's what they're talking about. They're not talking about your speed at the intersection, they're talking about your speed as you approach. I like to play with the intersections. I like to come up and screech to a halt, and I get flashed every time because I'm going over 15 when I cross over, but I stop behind the limiter, and I'm perfectly legal. But that's how they work. And once you're at the intersection, it doesn't know that you take off. You can run a red light after stopping, and it doesn't know. It doesn't have any way of recording that. So these things are not perfect. They're designed to get people who roar through and are going at a speed that is projected not to be able to stop, and that's how they're triggered, but they're going to miss some.
Mr. Wiley?
Thank you, sir. Dick Wiley, I can go along with the idea that you want to do away with them. The question I've got is, about the time those came in here, I started going to my mom's house, which is over near Redlands. So I would usually come back through Redlands, down Barton Road, and I would go usually in the afternoon and evenings, and I would hit traffic signals that had no red lights. And people, unfortunately, let's go back. If you go and get your driver's license, you've taken a test, and you've answered questions in that test. It said, when you come to a red light, what do you do? You stop. Okay? You come to a stop sign, what do you do? You stop. Well, rules were made to protect people. I've gone up and down Mission Road many times when those stop signs were there, and people were annoyed by them. Nobody's coming? What the heck? I'll blow through them. And some were 20, 25 miles an hour. I would venture to say that probably the neighborhood 20, 25% or more would blow through that or roll through it instead of stopping and creeping through. You get up to Mission in California. I've seen them. They'll get there, oh, nobody's coming, chuk, right around the corner. I slowed down, but I went right around the corner. You've got a stop sign there. What's the stop sign for? Well, that's for the other person. That's not for me. What I would like to see is some type of device put in or correction measure to say, stop and think. Now, I've seen a lot more courtesy in this town since that red light's been there. Only thing I think people are thinking is, I don't want to get caught. I don't want to pay the fine, so I'm not going to do it. My suggestion had been, and I think I brought it up at that time, if you, you were talking about add another second to the yellow, let's add two or three seconds to red in both directions. You want to blow the red light? Blow it. But as soon as it goes from red to green, that's got my right to pull out, and the guy that runs the red light runs into me. That's my fault. I pulled out in front of him. No, the red light was red. You stop. Well, but we've got excuses. So I would suggest that try going if you can, if it's legal to go, extend your red light in both directions so that what you're trying to do is prevent accidents. But in our society, you look at what they're doing. The rules are made for everybody else but me, and we're getting more and more. You look at texting. I can go over to see my mom, cross her there to ask to stay at Villa. And I can't go from Mission and Mountain View to her place without seeing at least one, if not more, people on the cell phones. What's the rule? You don't drive and text. You don't drive and talk on the cell phone. I had one this afternoon when I left your ribbon cutting. Pull up next to him, I hear this, phone was going, and I looked over at him, and they looked at me. You got a problem? You know, I mean, you can have confrontation, but the idea being, let's follow some rules. We've got to get back. If you're not going to abide by it, we have to put something in place. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other pressing comments, we do have a action that's been moved and seconded. Everybody remember what all the elements were?
I wanted to perhaps have Mr. Rigsby, Dr. Rigsby, repeat the motion so everybody's clear on what we're voting on.
Okay.
The motion is to, instruction to staff to investigate our options to terminate our contract with Red Flex prior to the five-year expiration of the current contract and to investigate, have reports from the city attorney on some of the Corona-related legal issues and a report from the sheriff's office on our experience with accident rates, both at the red light camera-controlled intersections and citywide.
That action has been moved by Mayor Protim. Do we still have a second from Councilman Peterson?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes, and I'm sure staff will work on timeframe to list that on our agenda.
I'd like to make one other motion on that same item, and that is to investigate what it would take and the ramifications of increasing the yellow a second. I think that that's a good idea.
My second motion.
I asked to separate that out. If there's a consensus or obviously there's an action that has been moved on that item by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
And seconded.
Simply investigate the ramifications and possibilities of increasing the yellow by a second.
Without reducing the.
Yeah, that would be, it would be scavenging the red.
Well, he's saying rather than my motion, which was to lengthen the yellow light duration by one second, direct that, he wants to investigate the ramifications.
But you didn't, in the motion, as you just stated, you didn't mention that. Say it wasn't part of the motion.
It was a second motion, but it was.
Oh, okay. Or your motion, whatever your.
Yeah, I was about to make, yeah.
Or even if I may comment, you know, are there good traffic data? What if you, like we heard, lengthen the red light another one or two seconds? What are all the options? We want to make it safe.
Those two, those two options accomplish roughly the same thing. There's some.
What if you did both?
Well, it would not be a bad thing. There are many municipalities that have the both directions red for one or two seconds to compensate for red light runners, and lengthening the yellow accomplishes roughly the same thing until people, you know, eventually figure it out and then start, you know, really going long. But you'd have to really know which intersections are involved because it's quite a problem. There were issues about eight years ago, particularly in San Diego, where there were municipalities that shortened yellow lights at red light camera-controlled intersections, and they were found out, and the courts overturned all of their tickets, and they didn't like that very much. So shall we go with his motion, or do you want me to state it?
You state yours.
Okay. My second motion was to lengthen the yellow light durations by one second in all approaches served by red light cameras, and I can soften that by saying investigate the possibility.
I'm not sure what, how we have to do to do that.
My second will be amended to whatever gets investigated.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will look forward to some exciting reports in the future.
I just wanted to make one last statement. I agree with the gentleman regarding, one of the problems we've had is that many of the people who were getting red light camera tickets were visitors, and I have now talked to a number of patients who come to the medical center of the university who unfortunately have chosen not to come to these institutions, not necessarily because of red light cameras, but just because traffic is so bad. And I think, once again, we need to emphasize that if we want to fix some of these traffic problems, we need to improve our roads, and we need to take every opportunity to widen roads, put in bridges, whatever we can to move traffic quicker and easier and more efficiently so the university and the medical center can get their employees, students, and patients there on time. So I just wanted to emphasize that again.
Item number 11. We have a proposal from Economic Development that I think is an interesting proposal, and I will ask our Economic Development Director to present some information on this item.
We'll keep it short and clean, and basically, the proposal is to waive the city's portion of building permit and plan check fees for all, sorry, all commercial retail construction for the next 12 months, as long as there's a 70% retail component in that project. And that's where we're at. There's a relatively small impact, as far as a financial impact to us, the way that... There's a relatively small impact, as far as a financial impact to us, the way the permit fees are structured right now. Thirty-five percent of the permit fees go to the city. The remainder goes to our contract company, Willdan, who actually does the physical plan check and performs the building inspection. And the purpose of this is to make it a little easier for smaller businesses and businesses contemplating coming into town. And kind of extend the olive branch to existing businesses here to maybe expand and grow and create a more retail-friendly atmosphere for La Milanda.
Councilman Peterson?
Just to try to put that in perspective, Deborah, could you tell me, for example, what the, what this request would have amounted to in terms of the new store that didn't open on the corner of-
Fresh and Easy.
Fresh and Easy.
Fresh and Easy.
What, what, how much would that have cost us? Or how much would we have lost on a project like that if this was in place? Roughly.
I don't know offhand. Not much, I don't think.
I think you phrased that the wrong way, not how much it cost us, how much we're subsidizing and helping whatever business that is to come into-
Right. That's-
Into place. And for, I didn't do Fresh and Easy, but I did look at a couple of the smaller tenant improvements there in the Meridian project. And it was less than $3,000 per applicant or per project.
Do you have any data from other communities or experiences that have tried this? And whether it's reap dividends, or is this kind of something we're launching as a new idea?
This is, this is a relatively new concept. There are other communities doing this. The city of Banning is waiving all fees for all types of construction, residential, commercial, and retail.
Oh, wow.
And I believe Rancho Cucamonga is doing the same thing, or not, sorry, Rancho. Banning only then is doing that for all, all types of fees. And they're trying to stimulate whatever growth they have. And I believe that went into place here about six or eight weeks ago for them. So there's no real hard data from anybody out there.
Now, this would include remodel as well as new?
My question is, at what point would they have to be in the process within 12 months to get the savings?
To pull the permit and be ready to pay those fees.
Okay.
So they would have to be able to end the plan check process, pay the plan check fees, or pay, be ready to pay the permit fees.
Okay, so it's at the time the fees are assessed that the 12-month period counts for, okay.
I think we're all pretty familiar that right now, retail is in a very deep slump.
And it's, it's not just here, but it's internationally. It's pretty much everywhere. Local retail's competing with internet. And I think anything we could do to experiment for a year would certainly be worth it because we might get one or two businesses that we otherwise wouldn't have. We might not, but it's worth a try. And if you can bring a few jobs into town, I realize it might crowd a few roads a little more, but still, it's probably worth it.
I would absolutely agree with that. For me, it's not as much jobs as, we have huge potential in this city to, in spite of the economy, in spite of the fact that retail's down and it's difficult to get funding, I think there's lots of parcels that can be developed commercially. Because there's lots of businesses, believe it or not, even this economy, that are expanding. You know, not everybody is going down. There's people who are, Walgreens opens up about 100 stores a year. And that's just an example. Apple, for example, opens 25 to 50 stores a year. Each business has its own business, its own plans as to where they're going to go. I think the important part of this is that, not necessarily that someone's going to actually necessarily move to this town because they're going to save $3,000, because a lot of these projects is going to be in the multimillion dollar range. The signal we want to send to the business community is that we want to partnership with them and help them in any way we can to facilitate them coming into our town. And the more we show that via public hearings, the press, you know, seeing that we have a council who's supportive of that, the more likelihood we'll have of bringing those businesses here, which kind of moves me to a different subject. I have now become so sensitive to trying to generate revenue for the city that I, in fact, I did it today. I will do everything possible to try to spend my money in the city, and specifically gas. I will literally drive and plan my trip so I stop in La Milanda. Obviously, me buying gas is not going to make a difference. I think the point I'm trying to make is that when you have 22,000 citizens plus another 60,000 visitors approximately a day, if we can educate them that they need to do what they can in assisting us and trying to spend some money here, it'll go a long way. We've got lots of restaurants who, because of the economy, are struggling. So we want to remind everybody that we all go out to eat. Just think for a second, and before you decide to go to another city, spend your money here because not only you drive less, but more importantly, if we all collaborate, we will be able to generate revenue as a whole. So I just want to keep emphasizing that. I think it's a great idea to step in the right direction, and I think that we will probably see some positive benefit from it.
If I can, wait, one more comment. I think Dr. Rigsby hit a point there when he asked about, is this for existing businesses as well? We may or may not attract any new businesses by doing this. But we have a lot of businesses that have managed to survive the financial shakeout. And they're at a point now where a little bit of help to do a little remodel, to add some new booths in a restaurant, to put in a new counter in a store, may make the difference between surviving and not, or attracting that customer or not. And I think that's an important part of what we're doing with this.
If it's appropriate, I'd like to move the recommended action.
Second it.
We've had an action moved and seconded. I had one or two other questions. The 12-month, any particular reason arrived at that versus six-month trial period or some other duration?
Twelve months is, it seemed like it was a random number, but it seemed like a reasonable amount of time for somebody to get into the plan check process, to put together what they need. But not to make it so long that, you know, with any luck, the economy's recovering and we're subsidizing activities that maybe we shouldn't be subsidizing. The idea is also that at 12 months, if there's a need for it, we can reopen this issue, look at it again, and extend it. It's not a 12-month-and-die proposal.
And then just a comment. It's an interesting idea. I'm not sure, I'll be perfectly blunt whether for or against it, still debating this issue. It seems like the, you know, the streamlining, electronic plan checks, making our city user-friendly to businesses unquestionably going to pay dividends. This one, I just don't know based on the somewhat lack of track record, but it's an interesting idea. But anyway, we've had an action moved and seconded. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and I'm willing to give it a try.
That's all we ask. We'll experiment. Well, it's an experiment.
And just for some members of the community, those of us on the council and staff are as puzzled and frustrated as you are with the Fresh and Easy, you know, the building was finished substantially almost a year ago. We've had repeated contacts with Fresh and Easy and Tesco Corporation. Unless there's any further updates, every contact we've had has been basically-
I do actually have some-
-a stone wall. And so if someone can tell us more, that'd be great.
Well, interestingly enough, I happened to be at a Fresh and Easy store in Yuccaipa. And it actually started briefly with asking one of the employees how big their store was to try to compare it to ours. And he said he didn't know, but he would direct me to someone who did. The person he happened to direct me to was the district manager for Fresh and Easy, which would end up being the district manager that's going to take care of our store. And I talked at length with him about their plans. They are moving forward. They didn't give me a concrete answer, however. Couple of quick items. They are opening up the store in Highland next month, so they're moving forward. One of the things that he did suggest to us is, you have to remember that Fresh and Easy is a division of a multinational company that's the second-largest grocery store chain in the world. So when they plan things, they don't necessarily look at each individual community and necessarily understand specifically the impact. They look at it from a regional perspective. So therefore, sometimes it requires the community to educate them as to the advantage they might have in perhaps opening up our store sooner than later. So one of the things he suggested to us was to, as a council, try to approach corporate offices and remind them that this is a store that we believe is going to do very well for a number of reasons, and that may push it. And he told me that Cathedral City did the same thing, and it actually worked. They were able to persuade corporate headquarters that they need to speed up that store, and they did. Fresh and Easy has everything in place. They've got the stores, they've got the distribution model, it's just that they changed their timeline because of the economy. They're now speeding it back up. They're opening, pretty soon they're going to start opening about three stores a week. They've opened about 150 stores, and they're aggressively buying land up in Northern California. The other quick thing I should point out to people, people will figure this out for themselves, once the store opens, they're going to be pleasantly surprised to see how inexpensive their items are. And I'll leave it at that, and I think they'll just figure out for themselves. But I think that we're going to be proactive and try to approach corporate as a council. And I talked to Jarb about it, about drafting up a letter and maybe having the mayor sign it, and see if we can speed up the opening of the Fresh and Easy.
Thank you. All right. This brings us to our budget. And we have some issues that unfortunately are important related to our budget. As a very brief introduction, obviously, I think most of the community is aware that our budget is based on a July 1st to through June budgetary cycle. Nothing magic about that, obviously, but it's what it's based on. Instead of a calendar year, we look with a special focus every year at that time, as well as reviews during the rest of the year. Enacted a proposed budget in that timeframe a few months ago. There were concerns that might still have some financial challenges ahead despite some adjustments that were made, a lot of sacrifices by employees, and all the way through similar 5% reductions of council compensation and city manager. That those issues and best projections with the budget have been looked at now with the Budget Committee, I believe they met last week. And so would like to ask a city manager and Budget Committee and liaisons, members on council, to present this item and see where we stand on these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little background information, like you mentioned, back in July of 2009, or July of this year, the city council did approve the budget with a deficit of $181,500. And at that time, the council did ask me to look at, try to balance the budget within, at the mid-year budget. So with that, with that instruction in my, I went out back and take a look at all our revenue sort, all the funding, include the general fund, enterprise fund, RDA, and see what we can do to reduce the spending. But at this time is, it turned out that we already did look at all of those. And now it's time to do some layoffs. And so I would like to, well, I will mention that I would like to implement the layoff program. And I will be very selective of who, which position I'm going to lay off so that I'm not going to have an impact, well, I'll have some impact, but not big impact on the services. And with, with the position I plan to lay off, I can save about $125,000 in general fund, which means that I'm too short about $56,000 to try to balance it, $151,500. That's kind of in my report.
We can either have questions of Mr. Typerd, or we can ask Budget Committee to present any representatives and so forth that would like to, anyone wish to speak from Budget Seeing none rushing forward. And I believe our chairman not able to be here this evening. So, anyway, obviously, we have things on the table. And I guess if it's acceptable, the council, just any brief report from Budget Committee liaison representatives before further discussion?
Our city manager, Jarb, pretty much reported to us in the Budget Committee this week, similar to what he reported to us today. One of the things that the Budget Committee was focused on was not only that we balanced the budget, but rather trying to ensure that we run city services in an efficient manner. And that sometimes means that you reassess what's happening in the city, and you make decisions as to, are these some services that perhaps we're over utilizing? It's just like any good company, they look at streamlining their organization and trying to become more efficient. And I think Jarb is attempting to do that. But there's another factor involved here, which is, the economy's very uncertain, even though things have improved, no one really knows if they're continuing to improve or whether we're going to take another dip as the next year starts. Everybody has different opinions. My personal opinion is that there's a good chance that we may see a further dip in the economy as we move forward. If that takes place, we're going to see some significant reductions in our revenue as we move forward, as retail sales decrease and as property taxes get reassessed. So there's that big risk. So I think that as we look forward to the budget, it's important not to look just, you know, eight, 10 months down the road, but kind of look at it long-term and see what is it that we can do to anticipate some of the issues, try to make the necessary corrections. And it's unfortunate that we got to the point where we've cut everything we can, and now we have to cut personnel, and that's difficult. But sometimes those are decisions we have to make.
Any other comments from Budget Committee liaisons? All right, we have this item up for discussion. Councilman Peterson?
Yeah, two issues. The first one is, if we leave things the way we are now, with a reassessment of the budget, city budget and income and expenses at this point, what is our projected deficit by the end of the year? When I say the end of the year, I'm talking about next June.
$181,500.
$181,500. And so we haven't seen any reason to believe that that's going to be any better than that at this point yet.
As a matter of fact, we received the sale tax report in the second quarter, it down 18.77% compared to the second quarter of last year.
Okay.
Now, even though those, the second quarter is included in part of our last fiscal year because it's ending in March, our fiscal year ending, I'm sorry, June. And so, we down. So I'm not expecting next quarter, which is beginning of this fiscal year, it's going to get that much better.
Then the second part of the comment then was, we already initiated a shorter workday, which goes part of the way to solve the issues that you brought up, in that we can work more efficiently, we can work less hours, instead of laying off people, we would simply work less hours. That has not solved our problem, apparently, by doing that.
Exactly. This is, this is after-
This is after that.
Yes.
Then my third comment is, is that the project that we just, we just passed on tonight, the low and moderate income housing- the low and moderate income housing, in there, I believe that that was supposed to bring the revenue into the city in fees of about a million dollars. Was that counted in our budget for this year?
Yes, on that particular, yes.
That was already in the budget?
Yes, yes. And we also included the Holiday Inn Hotel.
Which isn't materializing.
Which was approved, but we talked to them, they're not going to come in anytime soon because of they can't get any financing for that projects.
Okay.
We had a discussion similar to this about two months ago. And at that time, we debated doing things in-house, doing things outside, and we waited. In fact, we looked about the same, we looked at the same deficit, and at that time, we took a decision that it would make sense, in light of our very significant reserves compared to the amount that we're looking at as a deficit, to leave things stable at this point, and to bear that rather relatively speaking, small deficit, and allow time to see how certain things would work out. And then right at the end of that discussion, the comment came in, well, let's have the city manager work toward a balanced budget at the middle of the year. And I think it's, in a sense, two conflicting directions given to the city manager, in a sense, because one is leave it stable, the other is balance by the middle of the year. And it's not possible to do both of those. Is that fair?
Yes.
So I think we have to pick which, which priority we want to go with. One point that ought to be made is, we improved $700,000 on last year's budget, if I understand that right. I also went to the budget meeting last week, and I didn't want to violate the Brown Act, so I didn't participate, but I sat, listened, and took notes. And the good news was, last year, we had anticipated a deficit of approximately 350 to 400,000, and instead, we had a surplus of about that same amount.
Yes, 308,000.
So the amount of the deficit that we would be anticipating this year is actually eclipsed by the surplus we had last year. And if we looked at this as a two-year budget, it might be worth the stability for the sake of morale. One thing I have to throw out is that there's several things we're working on. I know that our new economic development director is working hard to try to bring in business. And I know our colleague, Ovi, you've gone to a couple of trips to try to bring in business too. I think we're all looking for places to bring in business, and tonight, we just voted to reduce our economic development fees. I would think that because of the fact that we're, we're really not looking at a deficit, if you take last year into account, I think what some people were concerned about here in the council was if we had two years' deficit in a row, you're starting to add up, you add 300, 400, now you're talking 700,000. But you're actually talking about 200,000 out of 300,000 surplus last year. A year from now, we'd still be about 100 to the good. The other thing is, I'd like to see stability in our staff. They've been working hard, they've already taken some cuts, and this, frankly, as we all know, this is a terrible time to be put, put out of work. And I appreciate the great job the city manager is doing, because there are no other options. There are, but if you look at the costs when you do layoffs, there are significant costs to that. It's not a free lunch, and frankly, you have to do, you have to do more layoffs than the amount of savings you're going to reach by the time you're done, because you lose a significant amount of that in the cost of doing the layoff. So I'm wondering if we'd be wise to go with our original policy, I think ask the city manager to come back with a report mid-year, looking at trends, and certainly word could be put out to staff that if people find other openings, be sure to take them. I know historically, we've had a certain amount of attrition almost every year that records have been kept. We've had a couple of people leave. If we could allow people to either retire or find other positions and allow a more gentle landing for our staff, I think it would be very helpful to morale, and I'd feel better about it if we did that, because we're not being threatened fiscally. When you look at the two-year cycle, we're not being threatened at all by leaving people at work. The other thing is, if we could, if there's no work in certain areas, or less work, if it was possible, because we have a very creative city manager, and the rest of the staff are very creative, if we could reclassify people in other areas where there's work to be done, if reclassification means a modest pay adjustment for people, that might be better to offer that than a complete layoff. So I'll stop there. I wish we could go with our original strategy and leave stability, and I appreciate your following two contradictory directives, and so I don't have any problem with what you're doing. You're having to make a report on something that's very difficult, but I would appeal to the council to consider, if any one of us were in the situation of one of our good employees, we would all be hopeful that the council would take a very long-range point of view and allow some of the things that are being worked on, even by you, Ovi, to have a chance to kick in.
The one comment, just like to emphasize in fairness to our city manager, I do think we as a council need to give some clear direction at the end of this discussion. It's appropriate to have a good, forthright discussion, but let's be clear, it is not fair to the city manager, it's not fair to employees, it's not fair to citizens to, you know, leave this with conflicting direction. It's just not a good way to run any enterprise, including a city, and hopefully, we can come to a conclusion, whether we all agree, whether we don't all agree, I think is somewhat less important than we give clear direction. Discussion?
Yeah, I would like to raise my voice in salute to our city manager for taking a good, hard look at the demands placed upon the services provided by the city, and coming up with a plan that would be prudent even in good economic times. If, if the city is doing well and has a surplus, or has some kind of a reserve built up, it doesn't make much sense to the citizens to provide services that are not in demand. And I think what he's doing is rightsizing the government to the demands that are placed upon it at this time. And some of the things that we were talking about before, and doing things in-house, that could still be done, just stretched out over a longer period. And with the very low demand for services from various departments, I think some of the projects that we had planned to do quickly in anticipation of high demand can be stretched out. And I'd just like to say I support the direction that the city manager has taken. I support the direction and agree with the recommendations from the Budget Committee that he do so. And I feel for the employees who are involved. They're, some of them are friends of mine. I think they're very highly skilled people, who just at this point don't have as much demand for their services. And, you know, and keeping them on is, is a decision we could make, but I think anybody who had a household budget that was in arrears would do some belt tightening, and I think it's appropriate to do so.
Just had a question of our city manager. We gave you direction to try to balance the budget, and we said, please do it within six months. You moved quickly. So my question to you is, why is it that you chose to start implementing some of these reductions now rather than waiting six months?
Yes, with the salary go, the longer you wait, the, it'd be more difficult to balance that budget. For example, it costs about $30,000 a month just to pay the salary for this full position. Now, not including, if we lay off that person, we still have to pay the unemployment and so forth. That's the challenge, is the longer I wait, there'll be more, it's meaning there'll be more precision than I have to lay off to be able to balance the $181,500. So that's why I had to do it very quickly to get that.
I see. Thank you.
If I may make one other comment in general, later, might have some other specifics, but if we choose to go down the road of any layoffs, I think it's very important that we make it in as kind and humane a way as possible. I mean, some things are horrible for the people involved, but at least, I think, obviously, our intent is to give it a reasonable timeframe of, you know, not just the, you know, this is effective immediately, there has to be a reasonable support and severance time. On the other hand, I think we as council have to be careful not to stray into, you know, detailing, I want 31 days, and, you know, you follow that, that's not our role, but at least to communicate that directive. Councilman Peterson?
Yes, my, I'm going to explore this just a little bit further. Obviously, if we, obviously, we could save a lot of money by laying off half the staff of the city, but obviously, if we did that, something would suffer. And I'm trying to get a feeling for, if we reduce staff to balance our budget, how much suffering is a city going to go, how much are we, what's it going to cost us? Are we overstaffed? Or in fact, are there important things that are not going to get done in a timely manner? And in the end, it might not be smart to do it, simply because some things wouldn't get done that really need to get done, in terms of timeliness in getting permits out of businesses who want to come, services that need to be done, and so on. So I'm trying to understand what it's really going to cost us, or are we really overstaffed?
I try my best to, to pick the position that we will be laying off, by, at the same time, not, not reduce the overall service. And that's why I'm too short $56,000, and which can be equivalent to one additional position, and to me, I will try my best to reduce the expense to come up with that $56,000 to try to balance the budget, so.
So just to make sure I'm clear, you believe that Mr. Peterson's question is, are we overstaffed? In other words, do we have too much staff for the amount of work that there is to be done? And if I understand, your answer is that you look carefully to make sure that you found positions that would not impact services as much.
Minimize impact. I would say, use the word minimize.
Minimize, okay, minimize.
And, you know, as soon as we lay off, you will definitely hear some complaint, because it will reduce some of the service, but I use the word minimize.
Councilman?
I think one of the, one of the problems that the city manager, he hasn't exactly said it, but he's kind of alluded to it, is that secondary instruction that came in to balance the budget within six months. I think you've taken it to be retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year, in a sense. In other words, every month we go is building up a deficit. It's your understanding that we need to have the deficit eliminated now, because you, we're not giving you any slack on that. In other words, it had to be gone as of July 1. Because otherwise, if you came in on January 1 and said, okay, I've got a plan now, you wouldn't be accountable. But I get the feeling, you feel that you have to actually make, every day we go by is a deeper deficit, and you have to make up for that deficit retroactively.
No, I take it back. It's not increasing deficit, but it's more difficult as you wait to try to meet that.
I think you're saying the same thing.
Because you're saying the same thing, though.
Yeah.
Because you're, in other words, you're not going to have a fresh start mid-year and say, let me take a look mid-year on. You're actually trying to do it from the beginning of the fiscal year.
In other words, put it another way, if we don't do it now, but we do it in February, we're going to have to lay off eight people instead of four in order to solve the problem.
That's my point. And I don't think that was the policy direction we were heading toward when we, two months ago, we said, let's leave things stable and then take a look in six months. In other words, I thought what we were suggesting was, look toward a plan in the next six months to work toward a balanced budget. The deficit is not that massive, especially when you look at the surplus that was unexpected from last year. So I'm concerned about, we're veering back and forth a little bit now, because originally, our directive seemed to be to leave things stable. That's where we were before we suddenly had the balanced budget part thrown in. Isn't that right?
It's mixed in one motion, so it was added to the motion, so that's.
If we had not added that, then you would have left things stable.
If I can respond to the manager's defense, so to speak, I do think, again, like I mentioned earlier, we put him in a position that's very difficult. I think there's some cross-currents from the council, we've heard some differences of opinion. I've asked some in general questions and observations, but I'll get specific. I am uncomfortable running deficits as someone in charge of a budget for a city, whether it's a relatively small deficit or a large one, I'm still worried. I was concerned when we enacted our budget at the start of the fiscal year, that we were enacting one that we knew had an ongoing deficit, but on council from Budget Committee, consensus from council, I thought it was wise to give it a few more months to see, is there some way we can do something more to get the budget in line? I unfortunately concur with city manager's comment that sales tax revenue looks like it's taken a significant dip, and I personally am unwilling to continue in a deficit. Yes, I want to be humane to anyone that gets laid off, concerned about reduction in service, but I still think the average citizen says, you've got to balance your budget as your first priority, as long as, you know, obviously, can't provide any service whatsoever, and I don't think we're anywhere near to that point. So again, I think we, another philosophical point, I view city council as somewhat of, as a corporate board, representing citizens, as shareholders. Our charge, I think, is to give city manager, who's our CEO, direction. We have done somewhat cross-currents, but I have the consensus that we have to try and look to get as close to a balanced budget in the next few months as possible due to great concerns of whether our deficit could grow even more, and I'm not sure, I don't have the magic crystal ball. So to wrap it up, I concur with the direction of trying to move toward eliminating the deficit as much as possible in the next couple of months, and give direction to the city manager to achieve that in ways that he thinks appropriate with the least disruption in services. So that's, that's my specific opinions on the matter.
I just wanted to kind of reemphasize kind of how we got to where we're at. I think the public needs to be made aware that this isn't a decision that we're making suddenly. We started this process back in March, which, to my calculation, is seven months ago. And we looked at the budget, and we anticipated we were going to have some issues, and we said, okay, what are we going to do to try to resolve them? The city manager at the time was our prior city manager, and we looked at some ideas which included reducing salaries for some of the staff. There's some concerns from staff about that and how that was going to impact them, and some of the union representatives came back to us, and we relooked to see if there's any other things that we could be doing other than overall reduction in salaries to try to resolve the budget issue. After further negotiations, we finally, that delayed the budget process. Normally, we were supposed to approve that budget back in June, we ended up approving it in July. However, what took place was initially, the amount of money that was going to be saved by reducing staff salaries was in the neighborhoods of about $250,000. After we renegotiated the contracts and did not reduce salaries, but looked at other ways of reducing work, work hours, and deferring some of the vacation and things of that nature, the savings turned out to be only about $130,000. So we did everything we could to try to accommodate and try to work with the staff and try to bring a balanced budget. Finally, we finally got the new budget, and it showed that with everything we tried to do, we still had a $181,000 deficit. We, I think, clearly gave directions to Mr. Taipei that we would like to see a balanced budget, and he has worked tirelessly to try to accommodate that, and I commend him for working faster than any other government that I've seen work. I mean, I am shocked that we're moving as quickly as we are, but that's a reflection of what type of individual he is. And I think that, I know that Mr. Ziprek would like us. And I think that, I know that Mr. Ziprick would like us to wait another few more months, and it may seem reasonable, but we've actually gone into this seven months already, and I see nothing in the next two to three months that makes me believe that things will change significantly enough that we may not have to do these same things, make these tough decisions three months from now. So I concur with the mayor and Dr. Rigsby that, you know, we need to move forward and support our city manager on this.
Yeah, if I can briefly respond, I appreciate that I'm probably on the minority side on this, but if we're this hard up, then I would urge that my colleagues on the council not go on any more business development trips themselves and let Conrad go do it. If we really don't expect we're going to see any business coming in here from these trips, then we shouldn't be putting money into that. And I got another question on reserves. If we're this hard up, how are we, pray tell, going to fund the Stewart Street for two to three and a half million dollars? I mean, we were talking about very, very large amounts of money going out in projects just a couple of months ago, and we were getting criticized pretty hard for not funding that. And if we can't even keep our staff working, what are we doing talking about such large amounts of money going out? And we shouldn't be doing any of these other trips. So I'll leave it there. I mean, it's like, we have huge amounts of money for some things, and we don't even have money to keep our staff intact. And I understand the city manager is doing what he's instructed to do. I have absolutely no criticism for him.
He did exactly what...
He's doing exactly what he understands he's supposed to do. But we're making it retroactive, so he has to dig out of a hole now. We're not even saying, "Let's start at the middle of the year." And I thought we had a pretty clear indication we were going to leave things stable. I'll stop there, but that's how I feel.
Can I make a comment?
Bob, you were chair of the RDA.
Yes, I was.
For a while, you know that's a different budget.
Yes, but there's a certain amount of ability to move funds between things, and I know the RDA's been cut by 2.9 million, far more than the city budget. And the city budget is simply lending money to the state, the RDA's truly losing it. I mean, 2.9 million versus 300,000. But the city budget had a surplus last year. We're forgetting, we actually had a surplus last year when we thought we were going to have a deficit, so we're not running two deficits in a row. And I'm just looking at it from the standpoint that anybody in our position, we have to look at the long-range good of the city. If we really don't think we're going to bring any business in, why are we bothering to go to shopping center conventions? I would have faith that we, I mean, tonight, I'm very supportive of trying to bring business in. I'll support any reasonable proposal that you guys are for as the RDA Chair and Vice-Chair to bring business in, but if you don't believe we're going to bring anything in, we're not going to have anything to do, then we're just wasting money.
Well, just a quick response.
Sure.
I think there is opportunity for us to bring some businesses in. It's just that by the time those businesses come in, get approved, and actually start making money, we're looking at two to three years. We're talking about trying to balance a budget that's going to come to fruition here in seven or eight months. So I can understand your concern about trying to expend funds, but it's my understanding from talking to other cities, is that if you want to bring in certain developers, no disrespect to anybody who works on the council in the city, but a lot of these companies would like to talk to elected officials. They understand that the buck stops with them, and if they get a feel for what, I've had numerous conversations, and it got to the point is, will your city support this type of business? Will it support it in this location or this location? Well, sometimes, the people who are not elected may not understand that, but folks like myself who get to talk to individuals who say, "I don't mind having a restaurant here, but I definitely don't want this type of restaurant here," that's the type of input that you have to be able to provide to some of those officials. So I think it's important for us to continue to do so. And unfortunately, very little of that was done in the last eight, nine years before that. So for us not to at least make an effort in trying to go and talk to these folks, these are companies that are multinational, we're competing with hundreds of cities. For us not to at least attempt to meet them defeats the purpose. The chances of getting them here decreases significantly if we do absolutely nothing except hope that they may come in. They're not going to come in on their own unless we go out there and meet them, and that does require expenditure of funds. It's not significant, it's part of the budget, but it's not, the amount that we'd be saving and trying to be more efficient is significantly higher than a trip to San Diego that may only cost $300 to $400 out of a budget of $15 million.
Like, and 180,000, that's offset against a surplus of 300,000, is frankly breakeven. I just want to point out that we are not running two deficits in a row. We were willing to accept a deficit a year ago, and apparently, we're not willing to do it this year, even though we're supposedly going to do economic development, and if you're talking about three years in the future, I guess that's sort of down the line, but seems pretty remote.
Did the economic crash of a year ago change our opinions at all? Maybe a little bit?
Actually, what the big concern is for commercial properties, we talked about earlier tonight, and I'm doing, obviously, I'm voting with you folks on supporting anything we can do to make it more competitive. If you believe we're going to bring something in, you're going to need staff to help answer inquiries, because as we all know, one council person cannot commit the whole city council to approving a project. It takes the whole council. So it's just, it's an opinion.
I think we've had an appropriate and worthwhile discussion, but obviously, I think we do have to give fairly clear direction to city manager for fairness. I believe this item is asking for a direction informational only, don't believe we need formal action, but correct me if I'm wrong, I'm at least hearing a majority consensus of moving toward achieving a balanced budget. I might have slight difference of interpretation on that. I would personally, as I interpret it, see moving toward a balanced budget by the end of December, not try and make up the entire deficit back to July 1 retroactively. But I personally, speaking for myself, would like to see us on target that from, as best we can project, by the end of this calendar year, that we're on course for a balanced budget through the final six months of our budget. Things continue to get worse, I will consider changing that, but that's at least the direction I was intending to signal, and I don't know what the Budget Committee lays on, if that was their consensus as well, but we need to at least, I think, clarify that and give our city manager direction.
Well, the amendment to the original motion was as interpreted by Jarb, that the budget needs to be balanced for the year, and we wanted some plan in place to achieve that by mid-year. So I think he's interpreted it correctly. If you look back at the motion, or if you look at the tapes, it wasn't to, you know, by mid-year, balance the second half of the year.
I think we might have a difference of opinion on where we want to go on that tonight, but certainly, there's at least, exactly, at least clear consensus, I think, with the majority to move toward having the budget balanced by the end of the year from there on out. Certainly, we're going to revisit this in a few more months, and we may move closer to that direction, depending on what happens, or may not. Councilman Peterson?
Just philosophically, we haven't had a deficit budget for a long time, and economies go up and down. And we could make a budget on a month-by-month basis, or a day-by-day basis, or a year-by-year basis, and we've actually talked in this council of going to a two-year budget. If we have five years in a row that have a surplus, and we have a significant reserve built up, which we do, so if we go five years, the next five years with a surplus, and then we go one year with a deficit, are we really in bad shape? I mean, do we suddenly make a great change in things because one year, I mean, it seems like if we went five years with a surplus of, say, $300,000 a year, we ought to be able to go a year or two with a deficit of $300,000 a year, and we're in fine shape. That's what we have reserves for. You know, we wouldn't start making corrections, you know, every half hour in our budget. It would make sense that that's how you even things out.
We all have different interpretations of budget cycles and economic events. You know, I don't want to cut off discussion. On the other hand, if we have a consensus, I sense probably, Mr. City Manager, do you have at least a general consensus and direction, majority of council, on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
For Mr. Ziprick, you know, I agree that if, in the meantime, the rest of the year we have somebody decide to leave, go someplace else, or retire, I'd be happy to call those people that we lay off for first consideration, for that position, even though it might be a different classification, but if they want that job, or they want the job, then they can have it, that kind of thing.
You know, if I don't get what I'd like, which is following what Floyd had just said a minute ago, I would prefer to go then as a fallback with what Stan said, which was, "We were not making this for the whole year." We were, I anticipated second half at the most, and I would prefer to have it be interpreted along the line the mayor said, because that's the way I understood the motion in the past. That would be potentially three votes for that interpretation.
Are we going to take a vote?
What the mayor said a minute ago, there's a difference of opinion on what was said last summer.
If I, I'm not arguing what was said. Sorry if I gave that impression. I just simply said, "At this point in time, I think it makes sense to, by the end of this calendar year, be on a balanced, non-deficit basis from there on, from ongoing point there, not try and make up any deficit that we've incurred since July 1." Obviously, I think we still have some difference of opinion on that, and that's great, but at least we have a consensus of a majority. As I understand it, that starting the next calendar year, as best we can project, we will, from that point on, not be running a deficit from there on.
And I think for more clarity, we need to state that there will be intermediate reports coming in on revenue, and the Budget Committee will have to see those reports and give you assistance on priorities and things to do.
Yes, we've had you have a meeting with them every quarter now.
So if, for example, the sales tax revenue deteriorates further, there would be even more efforts to try to achieve what Mayor Brower's talking about. And we can also anticipate that there will probably be a little bit of a boost in the sales tax because of the Clunker program, and we can probably look at it with a jaundiced eye and say it's not going to continue for the next nine months. But for the first quarter of this year, there's going to be a little bit of an artificial boost in that. So what I'm saying is, for clarity, I'd like to, I'd like to say that the direction I'd like to give is to work toward a balanced budget, including economic news that comes down the pike within the next year.
This is going to be a moving target. At least, we have, I think, an ongoing process to keep looking at this. I think we have a consensus of a majority as to the direction to go, and that will be revisited, I'm sure, as we go on.
So can I implement a layoff program?
There's been no motion to countermand that, actually.
If, again, just, I think, hopefully, speaking for majority on that, I, again, think that is what we as the Board of Directors, in essence, charge you to do, whether, you know, you can get $100 million from some new revenue source, that would be wonderful. If you have to resort to some other means, be it layoffs, my personal opinion is that's your unfortunate direction to carry out as a direction. And in all seriousness, I do think we need to not meddle too directly in personnel decisions. That's problematic.
I just want to make sure we're clear. So the city manager's been given direction that we need to make sure we have a balanced budget by mid-year. So if he doesn't initiate any program, and he comes back to us in January, and it won't be January, because we won't know the numbers until probably March, and guess what? We have another deficit, because we've kind of tied his hands, and we really don't want him to do any major decisions. We have to be very careful to make sure that he understands that we're not pushing the ball down the road, but we're real clear that we want to see a balanced budget as best we can, and he has the means, the knowledge, to achieve that by any means possible. If he thinks that's a miracle, he's going to get a ton of money, then that's great. If he feels like that's not going to happen, then perhaps we do need to make sure that he has the ability to do whatever he needs to do.
Isn't appropriate.
Give us wisdom, and then we'll try and wrap this up.
If we all reflect back on time, Jarb came into the city when the department he took over was not in very good shape. And if you look at it now, I think it's a difference in night and day. He made the right sizing movements that he needed to make. He obviously has looked at what he has to work with at this point in time and has a plan, and I think we trust him, and that's why he's where he's at today. And he's probably looked at some areas that he can make some improvements. Did we see our services go down when he made, put layoffs into Public Works? No, we didn't. We've actually seen improvements. We have more parks, we have more of everything since Jarb's been here. So I think we need to rely on the person that we gave this authority to. He obviously has a plan that he'd like to go forward with, and I think that's his job to do. We actually tasked them at the beginning of our Budget Committee session to go ahead with right sizing and to go with, go ahead with the layoffs and do whatever he needed, or whatever was needed by the previous administration. That was totally skirted. Jarb will not skirt the job. He will do what it takes to right-size the business and make Loma Linda profitable. And I got to get up at 4:30, so I'm tired.
Here, here, I understand. Thanks, appreciate the wise words from Budget Committee member. I think, again, we do need to wrap this up if we can. Jarb, are you totally confused, or are you...
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna press on, and then I will report back to you in December, and you would have...
Obviously, budget's a dynamic process. It's not a static process that we take one shot at, and it will continue to evolve, but at least a consensus to move forward with actions you think are appropriate to, at least from January 1 on, not continuing to run a deficit. At this point, I think that's a consensus, although obviously, it's not unanimous unless council objects. I will move on to, I believe we have one more item. I should have called a break earlier. I truly didn't think things would last this long. I'm always too optimistic how long things will take. Maybe we can get through the last thing, since we've persevered this far. Can everybody hang in there for a few more minutes? Not hearing anybody scream, so we'll try and continue. Last listed item, settlement agreement on Save Loma Linda versus City of Loma Linda. Again, very briefly introduction, we had some agreements that were made and some settlements that were made in this case. City attorneys announced those in previous council sessions, and may want to give just a brief word on that. And then it's open for any discussion that anyone chooses to pursue from council direction. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a lot to add, but as you recall, in our meeting in August, the city council in closed session did approve a settlement. I announced an open session, the substance of that settlement, which was to bring to a conclusion the Save Loma Linda versus City of Loma Linda litigation. I can report now that the agreement was executed by all the parties. The settlement funds were conveyed to the attorney for the plaintiff, and I believe the dismissal of the lawsuit has been filed with the court, although I have not received a copyback yet with the court stamp on it, but I believe that was to have happened the end of August or early September. So it may still be in processing with the court. But that is all I had to report this time.
Open for discussion. I will initiate, it's not a public hearing, but I think it's appropriate comment. I got... appropriate comment I got from Mr. Eglar, and it relates to, and I think others have asked the question, responding to questions, and so forth, related to making the decision in a closed session. This is a difficult issue, obviously, closed session items are one of the few exceptions for government affairs in California, where it is considered appropriate for closed sessions to occur, so that legal discussions can occur between our city attorney and other attorneys that may be better conducted in that environment. And so certainly, that's the intent of the closed session, and we will at least put that on the table as a basic introduction, and let anyone else weigh in. Gusmane Zipriks?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the issues that arose, I have a list of questions that were sent my direction from the press and members of the public, and it might be useful if we have, I don't know how many requests we have to speak, but if we have any, I think we ought to maybe let those come on fairly early. I don't want to repeat questions that the public has. I don't know, Councilmember Peterson has any?
Well, I just, this has been a concern of mine, too. I will say that negotiating, going through the process of what we did to settle this case, has been the most disconcerting experience that I've had on City Council in the last 18 years. And a lot of the public has asked me questions about it as well. Why did this happen? What, you know, why did you do this, and what happened, and details of why and what? I've got six slides that I'd like to put up on the screen, just to set the situation, so that we can understand what happened, and the history.
Beginning to think maybe we should take a quick break. Do we anticipate this could be, is everybody ready to plow on and see if we can finish this? Okay.
The slides are gonna take about three minutes.
Hearing no objections, keep going, sorry.
All right, next slide. Timeline, 1995, University Village Orchard Park specific plan was submitted to the city in 1995. September 20, 1995, Loma Linda City Council votes unanimously to certify the EIR, that's the Environmental Impact Report, for these two projects. These are the people that voted unanimously to do that. Next slide. July 25, 2006, through the efforts of a group called Save Loma Linda, Measure V was placed on the ballot. August 25, 2006, Save Loma Linda files a lawsuit against the City of Loma Linda over alleged inadequacies in the EIR. November 7, 2006, Measure V passed, and you heard the votes already tonight, Dick Wiley, I think, mentioned those, and that was what the vote was on Measure V. Next slide. It's always been the contention of the city that Measure V accomplished any of the supposed problems that there were with the EIR and the projects. In fact, Measure V basically caused those projects to go away. They simply were not able to proceed under the passage of Measure V, so that left the whole issue of the problem of the EIR and everything else totally moot, because the project didn't happen. A major revision to the general plan was undertaken to accommodate the provisions of Measure V, including an addendum to the EIR, which would solve any suggested problems. Save Loma Linda did not challenge the new general plan or the EIR addendum. Next slide. The City of Loma Linda, over the past several years, has repeatedly asked Save Loma Linda what more is needed to have this lawsuit dismissed. We finally have an answer. Pay their attorney Ray Johnson, and they will settle the lawsuit. Total cost to the city for this was, total cost to the city on the city side of the litigation was $310,000, as reported to me by our finance person. And Mr. Johnson's fees were not, were $98,000 is what we settled for, not $95,000. So this whole process, next slide, cost us about $407,000, which, the next question needs to be asked, what did we get in this city for $407,000? In my opinion, we got nothing. But this is what, this is the history of what happened, and the amounts of money involved. So that sets the stage of where the discussion went.
Further comments?
Well, I was just wondering, Floyd, on your first slide, did you mean 2005 or 1995?
Pam, help me. I got these numbers from you.
I don't think it sat there for 11 years before the EIR was challenged. I think it was 95.
It was 2005.
I think it was 2005. Okay. Wrong dates. Where do we go?
Comments?
These are the numbers that were given to me at the City Court, so that's fine.
I would suggest, I have some questions from people. I've heard some from Mr. Eglar and others, and my thought is maybe invite anybody from the public who wishes to make a comment or question, let them go, and then if there's any that they don't cover, I'll
Mr. Eglar, please, I think, again, not trying to cut off any discussion, but just, if we can kind of all agree, let's all try and keep our comments fairly brief, get a little later, so, you know, try and follow the two to three minute rule, if possible. Not going to set any red lights or bang the gavel, but just lay that out there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. David Eglar, living at, on Cardinal Court, 1186. I read about this decision in The Sun. I had come here about two minutes late on that August meeting where this announcement was made, but I understand that not too much was said. But in The Sun, Stephen Wall wrote a report based on conversations that he had with you members, and also in email or emails that he received. And when I read that, I felt that there were really a number of questions that the community really needs to understand, get answers to, in relation to this decision. And the, and I shared that then with you by email, and I appreciate your recognizing that, Mayor Brower. And I had sent it to the news group, but for some reason, it was not published. But I think it might be useful for us to just quickly identify these items that I had listed. Why did the council's discussion and vote take place in a closed session? I know you made a short comment about that, but really, what is the, what was the reason for doing this? For having this, for making that decision in a closed session?
Made my statement. Any other council members are welcome to respond if they choose, or City Attorney? Otherwise...
My, as I understand it, having been on the council for 19 years now, the reason, there are several reasons, there are several situations where you can be in closed session. And one of them is when you are discussing current litigation. And the reason you go into closed session, because current litigation involves two sides of an issue.
Right.
You have a defendant, and I'm using the right legal terms, and a plaintiff. And so, in this case, we were the defendant, we would go into closed session to discuss how we were going to solve this problem, what we would do, and how we would do it, without the other side knowing what we were doing, knowing our game, understanding, knowing what our game plan was.
Right.
To quote the exact wording, it says, "The legal counsel regarding the pending litigation may have a closed session, and when discussion in open session concerning those matters would prejudice the position of the local agency in litigation." So if the agency would be prejudiced by having an open discussion, then you can go into closed session if your attorney so advises you.
Right. Well, and that led then to the second question, why was Councilman Papaskew a leader and principal of Save Loma Linda able to participate in the discussion and vote if he chose to do so? I mean, that is obviously what followed. And what would you, how would you answer that?
I'm not going to answer for him, he can choose to answer. But again, if I can at least mention, as you saw on an item earlier this evening, every council member does make the decision on every individual item, whether it's appropriate for them to participate or to recuse themselves. We have certainly direction that each of us look to the city attorney for and following, but there is no legal mandate, there is no law that city attorney literally tells us how to handle each and every situation, will give general advice and so forth. Each individual council member then will make that decision based on their weighing of the facts. And as far as general background, just list that for clarification.
Mr. Mayor, because the question has been addressed, and none of us can answer it, since the, that's the same question other people have asked me, I think it would be fair to let our colleague, Councilmember Papaskew, answer that.
He's welcome to respond, but he's welcome to not respond, that's clearly his decision.
I will respond, but not at the appropriate time. I'll perhaps be able to answer some of your questions, but I'll let you finish.
Sure. That, of course, is what pops out right away, as you read that article. How did the leader of Save Loma, of Save Loma Linda, one of the leaders, participate in this? And so that's a question that I think really does need some answering. Then, the next question that I felt the article came forward with was, why did Councilman Floyd Peterson vote in favor of the action if he believed, and then I'm quoting from the article, that the discussion should not have been in closed session?
I'm going to potentially jump in. I'm not answering for Floyd, but it's an appropriate question for, I think, any of us that voted yes. We can't get into any specifics related to what was said or direction as far as details with conversations with our council. But I will clearly state, in my mind, in my opinion, based on what I thought was the best solution for the city, both for future financial risk, and for being able to move forward on other levels, that was the best decision to be made at that time. Sorry, didn't mean to jump in, but I think that's an appropriate question for all of us that voted yes.
I would, I would concur with what the mayor said with one addition. I think it was the best decision that we could come to at the time, with the plaintiff sitting in the closed session, listening to the discussion.
I see. Well, I really-
I do think that perhaps some other decisions, maybe even better ones, could have been come to, if that did not occur.
Well, I really appreciate your candor in responding, Mayor Brower, and Councilman Peterson. Then, number four, what was the basis for the decision, and I think you've gotten into this possibly a bit, Mayor Brower, what was the basis for the decision to have the city pay Save Loma Linda outstanding legal fees? I mean, what was really the basis for deciding to do that? I guess it would have been, instead of going to court, right?
I'm hesitant to get into details, other than what I've said. It's a fair question, but I probably personally won't elaborate any further. Anyone else?
See, that's, of course, what the, anybody reading this, reading that article that day would wonder, well, what, what was it that caused the City Council to make this decision? I mean, you got this, you know, this $310,000, and then another 98, that then got reduced to 95. But why?
The problem I have with the closed session in this situation is that, in this case, where normally the public benefits from having the council deliberate in closed session, when you have the plaintiff sitting in closed session, in a sense, it, I think it prejudices the public, because it would, the public would actually be better off hearing the whole discussion, because the public's going to hear what the plaintiff is hearing in this unique circumstance. It's very rare that you have a plaintiff elected, essentially like you've heard earlier, to the Board of Directors of the corporation.
Right.
So it's unique, and, but it's almost unheard of to have a public discussion of litigation, when you're discussing strategy, the odds of winning, what are the costs. But in this case, the public has curiosity about it, and we're not allowed to actually talk about what went on. If the discussion were open, then the public could weigh in on it, you could give your opinion.
Can you talk about it now?
We'd have to ask City Attorney. Are we allowed to talk about closed session now?
To give, again, to give anyone else from the audience a chance, would like to see if we have any other related questions.
Sure. And I've just got, I've just got two more, you know, that run through.
Sure, sure, go for it.
But I think that, no, but I mean, that really is the basic question. And like what you're saying, Councilman Zipriks, if the discussion would have occurred here, people would have walked away knowing why the decision was made, whether they agreed with it or not, but they would have known why it was made. And so that's what really the purpose of this question is. Why was the decision made for the city to pay the fee? I imagine there are a number of us here that are asking that question, right?
That's the question, that, I don't know how allow, how far we're allowed to go.
If, again, just if anyone else has some comments from the public, if you could just finish your comments, and then I'll let anyone else, and then we'll let everyone handle it.
Okay, all right. You wouldn't like to handle it that way, sure, okay. Now, the next question that we listed here, and that is, and this is the last one, because the sixth one that you had received was, was this going to be brought up? And I really do appreciate you having it on the agenda, and even though it's a late hour. I think this, well, like you said a moment ago, Councilman Peterson, this was been the most difficult thing for you to have to relate to in all of your experience, which is possibly the longest of any, I don't know, you were, have been 18 years on the, yeah, okay.
Nineteen and a half.
Nineteen and a half, and you found this the most difficult moment in your city council experience. But this question, and this was, this is based now, Councilman Papaskew, on what was, what was said, what was reported here in the paper. Although he abstained from voting, Papaskew was involved in closed-door discussion in the case. And then Wall writes, quote, "The whole lawsuit was preventable, and critics of Save Loma Linda, through their actions, failed to prevent it," Papaskew said in an email on Wednesday. And so you can understand why I wrote that as the last question. Was, first of all, was Mr. Papaskew's view that the whole lawsuit was avoidable, and the critics of Save Loma Linda, through their actions, failed to prevent it, was that discussed, if I may ask that? Was this discussed during that closed session? And if it was, how did each of you who were in that session respond to it?
If we could, you have some detailed questions, I just wanted to-
No, no, this is the last one.
-give an opportunity for anyone else, since we did open up for input, and then potentially be further discussion.
Are you suggesting that we not relate to this question?
I would like to just see what other questions along that line, or other lines, are there. are there. Just hesitate to get into detailed account.
Apparently, there is one response here.
Yeah. I mean, that's an easy one to respond to, the last question. And that is, this city council has talented legal counsel. And if we need to bring in experts, we do, on development issues, around EIR issues. We have very talented staff. And questions come before us. We vote on those. It was, as you saw, I put up there, it was a unanimous vote by the city council after serious consideration and after advice from our most talented staff and legal counsel that what we were doing was fine. Okay. Now, there were some people-
You mean to vote, to approve those two projects?
Yes, the EIR part.
Right.
Which we got sued over. Okay. Now, everyone knows, in the state of California, or at least in the United States, but particularly in this state, that it costs only a few dollars to file a lawsuit if you don't like something. And an EIR is the easiest thing in the world to file a lawsuit over. Mr. Ray Johnson, who was the counsel on that side, this is what he does for a living, is to simply file lawsuits against cities because somebody is disgruntled about something. And so when that hap, as soon as a lawsuit is filed, after this council unanimously decides to take a decision, with the advice from all of the people that we depend on, our staff and our legal counsel, that we did everything right, when a lawsuit is filed against us, we defend ourselves. That's just the way the legal system works. As soon as every, if we collapsed immediately, when any lawsuit was ever filed against us, we would never get anything done here in this city at all. We get sued all the time. And we defend ourselves, and that's exactly what happened in this case. We defended ourselves.
Well, I appreciate the answer to the question. I won't ask any more questions of the council. I would like to make just two quick comments, Mayor Brower, and then-
Sure.
One, I really do think, Mr. Popescu, those of us who are here tonight would really like to know what you meant when you wrote to the reporter here. "The whole lawsuit was avoidable, and the critics of Save Loma Linda, through their actions, failed to prevent it." What were you saying? I think that's important to get an answer to. And finally, let me just make a comment. What we've been listening to tonight, you know, all the way from budget shortages to traffic issues, to not having the inadequate number of, or let's say, the legal number of housing, low-income housing, the way we're seen in the community by other people. And finally, this whole issue of growth. What do we have to do to grow, to get retail here? I took the liberty and the opportunity just today to read those council minutes that went back to September 20, the meeting on September 20, and then the meeting on September 25. And if you read those minutes, and you see in those minutes what was portrayed here that was approved in those two projects, what was approved would have made all this discussion that we've had here this evening about all these items unnecessary, absolutely unnecessary. And three of you were in those meetings, your names were on the sheet tonight here, showing that you had voted in support. I, for the life of me, can't understand what happened. How did that change to bring our town to the situation that it's in now? I think it's unfortunate. I think it's tragic. And then all this other stuff now about lawsuits and paying extra and et cetera, et cetera. It's dumbfounding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Since we have opened this up, please, anyone else that wishes, sorry to bug y'all, try and ask you to make it fairly brief.
My three minutes will be much shorter than that. On one of your slides, Floyd, it's, I think you put in there, in 2006, we voted to approve Measure whatever. Why did we continue to spend money to fight that after the voters in this community voted against that?
No, we didn't.
Why did we continue to spend the city's money to fight that?
This, the lawsuit had nothing to do with Measure V. That was, they were two totally separate issues.
But it was all related?
Yes. And it was exactly at that point that we continued to ask Save Loma Linda, what can we do? The lawsuit is moot. There's nothing more to be accomplished. What can we do to settle? And we would never, we could never get an answer out of them. It took us two years, year and a half, almost two years, to get an answer out of them, what we needed to do to settle the lawsuit. We never could get an answer from them.
I don't know. I wasn't involved with any of that, either side of it. What you're talking about in closed-session meetings, is that supposed to be private?
Yes.
Yes. That's the purpose of closed session.
Then I just like, I have one question for you, Floyd. During Dennis's retirement party, you guys were in a closed-session meeting. You came running out to me, sought me out, and said, "You're part of the Budget Committee, aren't you?" And I said, "Yes, I am." "I've just finished this negotiation on settlement for this lawsuit, for paying this lawyer. I cannot believe this. I am so furious. I'm beside myself. I'm furious with this money that we're going to pay them." You told me a price of $150,000 they were going to settle, that the city was going to pay. I asked you how much at that point in time, yeah? Don't shake your head, no. I asked you at that point in time how much the city had spent fighting it, and you told me somewhere near a half a million dollars. Everybody seems to be pointing fingers all over the place. And I just wanted to clear the air. I've been sitting back there, listening to everything that everybody's saying, and everybody's whining and complaining. And we just need to be honest and quit screwing around here.
I'm missing your point.
If, if your closed session is supposed to be private and not divulged to just any Tom, Dick, and Harry, why did you run out and divulge that to me? Why, what prompted you to do that?
First of all, I can't tell you what happened in closed session, but I can tell you what didn't, I can tell you what didn't happen in closed session, I presume.
You told me, you just came out of closed sessions, and you told me exactly that.
I could never have told you that we voted to pay $150,000. I could never have told you that.
You told me that that's what it was going to cost to settle the terms right now, and you were furious.
I couldn't have told you that, because that was never, that was never the case.
Why'd you tell me that, then?
I can tell, what I did, what I can tell you and what I may have told you, and this has been brought up before, that I divulged what happened in closed session by stating what the demand was from Ray Johnson. That was public information. Ray Johnson stated that in public, not in closed session. Ray Johnson-
You're not Ray Johnson.
I know. But Ray Johnson stated that, because I was there. That was public information. What Ray Johnson, Ray Johnson was asked, when everybody was sitting there in court, how much money he had invested in this thing was going to be, and he said about $150,000. That's where he started. That was not a closed-session item.
You can-
And I can tell you what didn't happen in closed session. In closed session-
You didn't share that.
This council never voted to pay Ray Johnson $150,000.
You didn't say that. You were furious and upset that that was the demands of him.
Exactly right. And that was public information. He said, because Ray Johnson said that in public.
You told me that you just came out of your closed-door session, and you were flabbergasted and could not believe that, and you were mad that they had proposed anything like that.
That proposal was not made in closed session. That was public information.
Do you understand the reason why I think it was important that this be discussed in open session? Do you see the problem? I'll explain something to you, my colleague. The problem we're running into in this community is because, because of the nature of the way this came about, there's lots of questions about what went on. You're asking some good questions. So is the press. And we can't give clear, definitive answers, because it has to be kept in this veil of secrecy. And so you're kind of throwing these, you know, questions out. It'd be nice to answer them, but how can we?
You know what's real embarrassing? When I sit home Tuesday nights and watch this on the TV.
What's embarrassing?
It's obviously, there's one side over here, and there's one side over there.
That is democracy.
And it, sometimes, it looks mighty childish.
But when we're talking about the finances of the city, you're on the Budget Committee.
I sure am.
Is it childish to debate 98 grand going out?
Is it prudent to continue spending after the voters voted you down?
You have no choice.
Don't you cut your losses at some point?
You've heard the discussion, and we can't go into the specifics on closed session. See, I would have liked to have had it in open session, then we could have an even discussion on this, and I could respond more fully. But you can throw questions, and I can't answer them. And that's the same with all my colleagues.
Well, yeah, you'd do the same.
I know, but it's a problem, because I think it'd be better if the public knew what was going on in closed session, and just do it openly.
I've had my three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else care to?
Dick Wiley, one last question, I guess. When this is paid, $98,000, where's it come from? Does it come out of reserves? Does it come out of the general fund? Where is that going to be charged to? Or does it get deferred into some other area? Because I think that's going to have an impact.
Sure. Go ahead, please, Mr. City Manager.
Because the budget, the way it is, it will come from the general fund reserve.
All right, shall we?
All right, I'll wrap things up.
Give us some more.
Since leaving the planning commission, I've pretty much just stopped. I don't get television. I don't watch television. I don't watch Channel 3. I don't even watch streaming video of council sessions. This is the first one I've been to in a long, long time. And what it sounded to me like was that we've got some staff scapegoats that are going to have to get fired so that Save Loma Linda gets paid.
Doug Goodman with Goodman and Associates. I provide civil engineering services to the development community, so obviously I'm an advocate of development. And I think it's interesting, I hadn't seen the numbers before of the actual dollars going out, the $405,000. I like to point out the perhaps obvious irony of that's what Save Loma Linda has cost Loma Linda, but I think that's a drop in the bucket of what it really has cost Loma Linda, two of the largest, most prominent projects that would be underway right now had it not been for that measure. And I think the citizens should have a more specific amount of information provided to them to know really just how much they were saved and how much it has cost them. And this is perhaps a ridiculous statement to make, but wasn't there a basis for a counter suit of what Save Loma Linda actually has cost Loma Linda beyond just this lawsuit?
The number is very conservatively, at least $250 million.
Well, further comments from council, and maybe we can wrap this up in a little bit?
Sure. I'll go ahead and, the questions that have not been asked that have been thrown to me, and really I'll address these to my colleague, Mr. Popescu. When the case was commenced, were you privy to any discussions concerning how the legal fees were to be paid? And since you have been elected to the city council, have you discussed the case with any of the other leaders of Save Loma Linda? We're talking about Kathy Glendridge, Georgia Hodgkin, Jay and Valerie Galant, or Wayne Isaiah, or the legal counsel for Save Loma Linda. And out of the $98,000 settlement, did all of that money go to the attorney, or did any of it come back to members of Save Loma Linda or the association as a whole? And finally, if you, you know, participated in the, in the closed session, why did you not feel like voting on the final settlement? And those are the questions that have been given to me by different people.
I have a question, I have a question for Floyd. Why are you concerned about Ovi leaking when you're the one who did the leaking?
I'm just going to weigh in with a couple of comments. I don't have any interest tonight, and I personally don't think it's appropriate to get into a long discussion about all the merits of Save Loma Linda, Measure V, what might or might not have been the economic impact at this point. Those are all, I think, legitimate items of discussion, but the item we have on the agenda tonight is the settlement agreement. Simply put, I, as a member of this council, have to make what I think is the best decision for the interests of the city financially and for moving forward with certain directional and even emotional, you might say, issues before the city. That is the basis for my decision on this particular item that we have on the agenda. Just to mention one other issue, though, since we have heard about the costs of that lawsuit. I agree with the sentiment. I bugged with all these lawsuits and the amount that it costs the city, but we get hit with lawsuits, it seems like, every few weeks on various items we haven't discussed tonight. And I don't know the exact total, but it's certainly substantial, all the legal costs of, for lack of a better word, the development community suing over these things. So, you know, we can point fingers all over the place. There's lawsuits left and right. If I was king for the day in this country, I would enact significant legal reform on many levels and extend that to medical malpractice. And I think it, you know, is costing us as citizens enormously on all levels. But anyway, that, again, is getting far afield from our item on the agenda. But in a nutshell, that's what I think the specific item on our agenda is. We can't stray too far from that, and that is the reason for my decision with the information that was presented to me.
To answer your question, Mr. Riggsby, I obviously couldn't have leaked to anybody what happened in closed session. what happened in closed session. He said that what I leaked from closed session was that we were going to pay Ray Johnson a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which, as I said, I can't tell you, I can't say in public what happened, but I can tell you what didn't happen in closed session. This council never, in closed or open session, ever, ever voted to pay Ray Johnson a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So it's impossible for me to have leaked that information. That was a figure that Ray Johnson stated when you and I were sitting with Save Loma Linda and our attorneys and everybody else in a meeting. That was the number that Ray Johnson threw out in that meeting, which is public information. That is not what happened in closed session at all. That was public information.
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be appropriate. I think the public would. I know I would certainly appreciate a chance to hear from our colleague, Mr. Papescu, who has said at the appropriate time he would respond. Because I think the issue is about whether there was a common law conflict of interest or a Political Reform Act conflict of interest. One is common law, the other is under a financial interest. And, you know, we've raised the issues. I don't want to beat around the bush. And I think it would be helpful to the public to at least hear that, because that's what people are asking. There was ninety-eight thousand paid to a group you're one of the head people in.
May I ask this simply, because I'm a member of Save Loma Linda? I can unequivocally tell you that, as far as Jay and I are concerned, we have not seen a dime. That money went to our attorney. And I don't know any other members of Save Loma Linda that have benefited financially doing anything. Okay?
Okay. Of course, one point is that you weren't sitting in closed session on the settlement discussions, and one of our colleagues was. And that's what the public's concerned more about. If you didn't receive any money, he didn't receive any money. One of the rules is we're not supposed to have bias in our decisions. And if someone participates in closed session and the decision's made with that person participating, even if they don't vote, it can create a question. And that's the, I appreciate where you're coming from. It's a different question from other members of the public. So I think the question is, would our colleague like to respond?
Yes, I guess I should respond. I once was one of the folks who actually asked questions of the council when I was a regular constituent. And I think it's only fair that I do answer some questions. I don't think I need to go into every single question, but it's only fair that the public should have some understanding of what's happened. And I have to be careful not to disclose anything that happened in closed session. Mr. Egler made a very good point. And I think some of the questions he has, it's clear to me are based on the fact that he hasn't been privy to what's happened in this community prior to his arrival. This battle started even before I got involved. And the general plan, as Mr. Ziprick and Mr. Peterson and Mr. Brow would tell you, was a long process that involved multiple hearings and lots of people having input. And one of my comments in the press was that the lawsuit was preventable. And your answer was, well, if it was preventable, then why didn't we prevent it? And that's a very good question. And the reason that the lawsuit was preventable was because members of Save Loma Linda, which wasn't even a group of Save Loma Linda at the time, had brought to the attention of the city through letters by their legal team, through public comments, that the general plan that they were about to approve violated a number of laws. And they went to specifics. And I happen to have the lawsuit here, and if we need to, we'll read part of it. So in light of those concerns, and they even said, if you approve this general plan, there will be a lawsuit. They were basically dismissed. The city council approved the general plan, and sure enough, there was a lawsuit. So as far as I'm concerned, I believe that the lawsuit was preventable had the city listened to the people who brought those objections to begin with. One of the main reasons the lawsuit was filed was because there's an attempt, and there's still an attempt to this very day. I want to make sure people understand that this battle over development is ongoing. It's not just, you know, me against them. There's a lot of forces at work here that are trying day and night to try to overdevelop this town regardless of the economy, because things will turn around. But nevertheless, one of the main concerns of the lawsuit was to prevent overdevelopment of the hills. There was a ninety-six initiative that was passed by the voters in trying to protect the hills. And the general plan that was passed was a direct violation of that. And the lawsuit, one of the causes of action was to prevent that action from taking place. So I believe that lawsuit could have been preventable. Now, a little bit in regards to my involvement and why I was involved. I want to make sure that everybody's rule clear that my involvement is not based on some necessarily rules like Mr. Ziprick would like to claim. I can choose to participate or not participate. And my decision to participate is based on a real simple formula. Will my involvement financially benefit me? And that's a fairly straightforward question, and the answer is no. I talked to the FPPC, and they've had, we had a similar situation in the city of Redlands, where we had council members who were part of groups who sued the city and then later became on the council. One was former Mayor Cunningham. And it had the same issue. Can you participate in discussion regarding a lawsuit of a group that you're a part of? And the FPPC came with a ruling saying, absolutely. You can participate as long as you don't financially benefit. So that's the point. Now, I think that it's also important to correct a couple of perhaps confusion that may be inadvertently, or, there is no confusion. Mr. Ziprick keeps referring to me as a plaintiff, okay? I'm not the plaintiff in this lawsuit. And I'm going to read to you straight out of the lawsuit because I have in front of you. And it says, Save Loma Linda, an unincorporated association, petitioner versus the city of Loma Linda. Now, petitioner is another word for plaintiff in a civil lawsuit. If it's more criminal, then it becomes plaintiff, which is mostly the DA. So who is Save Loma Linda? Save Loma Linda, by definition, is, the petition of Save Loma Linda is an unincorporated association devoted to the preservation of the environment in the Loma Linda area, especially the hills, open space, natural habitats, and rare species. So I am not a plaintiff, contrary to his claim. Save Loma Linda is a plaintiff as an association. Now, the other point that needs to be made is that there's this reference keep being thrown around that I was involved in closed-session discussions. And what Mr. Ziprick and Mr. Peterson failed to tell the public is that we did devise a system by which I was not privy to everything that was happening there. So I was not involved in the actual settlement of the lawsuit. I can also tell you that I was, in answer to your previous question, I was not involved on behalf of the Save Loma Linda group in trying to settle this lawsuit. So in other words, I was not on the city's side, nor was I on the Save Loma Linda side. That was done by other individuals. Now, another thing that needs to be corrected here, Mr. Ziprick once again claimed that my presence in closed session was equivalent to Save Loma Linda being in the room. And what he's basically saying is that everything that transpired in closed session became privy to the group. And that is false. I'm appalled by the fact that you could actually make the accusation that I am disclosing information in closed session. I understand that it's my duty to represent the citizens. But it's not my duty to tell Save Loma Linda what's happening in closed session. And I have not done that. And I think for you to suggest that is just shameful, to be honest with you. Now, the other thing that Mr. Ziprick keeps referring to is he wants to give the public the impression that he was very upset, and he walked out, and he didn't vote. If he was so upset, then perhaps he should have walked out a year prior when we had multiple discussions and reports on the lawsuit. So it's disingenuous for him to somehow give the public the impression that he wasn't understanding what was happening, and he was uncomfortable, and therefore he just walked out. Well, no, he knew exactly what was happening. He knew all the parties that were involved, and he chose to stay. And to grandstand at the last minute, he decided, well, now that you guys are ready to vote, I'm out of here. Well, so I believe that needs to be corrected. I think that pretty much summarizes everything that I need to say. I think that, to make sure that everybody understands, I have a legal right to be there. The voters voted me in. And one of the reasons I chose to stay in closed session is because I do not trust Mr. Ziprick and Mr. Peterson. I have no faith in these individuals whatsoever to do what I believe is in the best interest of the community. And I'm not going to spend an hour explaining to you all what that means. But they're up for reelection real soon, and you'll understand. I have been understanding much better about how this city is going and who's driving and what's happening. And all that will come into an election. So I do not want to use the pulpit to explain that. But I believe that the citizens voted me in to keep an eye on what's going on in the city. And now I have a better understanding of what's going on. Thank you.
Should I give everybody three minutes to wrap up?
Sure, feel free. Go first.
Fire away.
One question, probably for the city attorney. And I don't know if you can answer that here. The FPPC rules consider a conflict of interest if you suffer monetary harm, or if it affects your finances in some way. However, FPPC rules seem not to address the issue of if certain things occur in closed session where the city could suffer harm, material harm. Where is that addressed? In what forum would that be addressed? And I think that that could be a possibility here. There are lots of things that we can do, perhaps legally, that you don't do simply because it isn't right, it doesn't look right. The perception would be wrong. But in some cases, someone could sit in closed session, like Mr. Papescu, and him not suffer any monetary damages, or it would not cost him anything, but it could cost the city. What forum is that addressed in?
Well, I want to be careful because, as you know, there's attorney-client privilege, and there's the closed-session rules on confidentiality that we cannot violate unless theoretically the council can vote to open the closed session. I don't recommend that, but it's possible. Anything, the Brown Act doesn't require anything to be in closed session. It simply gives exceptions to the normal open-session requirement that allows you to go into closed session, where it's in the interests of the city to have that confidential discussion, the open discussion, the privileged attorney-client discussions. And those privileges should be preserved and maintained, if not solely for the benefit of the city in this particular case, but to preserve issues and legal theories and so forth in any future litigation by other parties, perhaps. So there is some benefit to the city in continuing to preserve that confidentiality. It's been stated previously, I think pretty clearly, that the individual council members are required to make their own determination as to conflicts of interest. In doing that, of course, the city attorney can give advice. Individuals can seek advice from the Fair Political Practices Commission, from the Attorney General's Office, from their own legal counsel. Ultimately, none of that advice, with the exception of a written opinion from the FPPC, can be used as a defense if there comes an issue as to a person's participation. You know, my role as a city attorney, obviously, is to give heads up, to provide training and materials and advice to avoid issues as much as possible. So I think our practice here with the city is to err on the side of caution typically, as we saw tonight. Sometimes these issues are a little bit unclear. But ultimately, the council members make those decisions. The Political Reform Act has specific prohibitions and rules, and there are regulations that have been adopted to implement those rules. And there's also the Government Code 1090 regarding contractual conflicts. And then there's a body of law which we refer to as the common law. And under the common law, situations can arise where there's an appearance of a conflict of interest or that does not arise to the level specifically set forth in the Political Reform Act or Government Code, Section 1090. And so those issues council members need to consider, consider carefully, and get the best advice, and ultimately make their own decision. And I think we went through that process in this case and as we have in many other cases. Beyond that, I'm not sure what else I can say.
I have a question about that question. If you're concerned that his involvement might injure the city, then why is the remedy to that throwing it out into public discussion? I don't quite get that one.
Well, I'll give you my quick take on it. The questions that have come up tonight could be addressed much more easily if the public could hear the discussion that we had in closed session. The public, right now, only knows what basically the settlement document says. And all the inner workings of many things that go into a discussion like that, the public has no input on, except the public does know, and I appreciate where our colleague, Mr. Papescu, has taken the position that he has no, I take it, Ovi, you take the position you have no conflict. Is that a fair statement? Okay. And I also take it that you're basically representing, during the course of your being on the council, you've never had a discussion with any of the other principals of Save Loma Linda about this court case.
I know you would like to start a deposition, and I'm not going to allow you to do that.
No, it's a very simple question.
I don't think I need to go into details about any conversation I might have with individuals. I made it real clear. I have not disclosed closed-session information, and I'm not sitting on the city council as a representative of Save Loma Linda. I'm here to represent all citizens.
And why didn't you feel comfortable voting in the final vote?
I also made it real clear that I believe that I had to vote what I believe was in the best interest of the city. And it became clear to me that the best interest of the city was being served. So therefore, I let the other members decide it. If I felt that there was a move to move forward and cost the city more money, then perhaps I would have voted. But at that point, that's one of the reasons I felt I didn't need to vote on it.
So as far, since you've been on the council, you have not discussed the case? Because you can, through inference and things, you can obviously make suggestions. I think everybody understands how these things can come about. You wouldn't have to say, this is what happened in closed session. I mean, you hear lots of things when you're in closed session. You wouldn't have to quote it exactly. The only question I have is, from the public's standpoint, I take it that you're saying that while you were on the council, you have not discussed the case with other principals of Save Loma Linda? In other words, you've had a firewall between you and the other members concerning this case?
I will repeat my answer again. You're trying to accuse me of disclosing closed-session information. I made it real clear. I did not disclose any closed-session information regarding this case.
But you didn't discuss the case itself.
I discussed the case with them.
I'm asking if Ovi did. The point I'm driving at is he was a principal of Save Loma Linda, and he has a different relationship. I'm not involving you, but I mean, because you've indicated you are not part of Save Loma Linda. Ovi has historically said he is, and he even gave the reason why the case was filed. So that's the reason I asked. When you filed the case, did you get into how the case was going to be paid for? In other words, did you feel an obligation to help make sure the legal bills got paid when the case was getting resolved by the city? Did you feel an obligation to see that the city paid the legal fees for Save Loma Linda?
Not at all. My obligation is to make sure that the citizens' wishes are taken care of and that the city is run in the most financially prudent manner as possible. I had no loyalty to them whatsoever as far as making sure they got paid or anything like that.
Because you understand, we've never seen the retainer agreement. I trust you have.
No, I have not.
You've never seen the retainer?
Never seen the retainer. You're making the assumption that I am Save Loma Linda. I'm just one of the members of Save Loma Linda. I happen to be one of the outspoken members. But there's... do I need to read the definition again to you? We had fifty different people helping us. In essence, they're all Save Loma Linda members. There's lots of individuals involved. I'm not the only one.
You're one of the people, I think, of the inner group, though.
I still don't understand why you're concerned about his injuring the city, as opposed to... I don't understand why throwing it into the public forum, because you basically walked out, I presume, because...
I was not...
Because you were concerned...
May I give my answer?
Okay, please.
Okay. I'd rather you didn't give my answer for me. My reason was because I wasn't in a position yet to vote yea or nay. I wanted the public to hear the whole discussion, because at that point...
Prior to the settlement.
Can I finish, Dusty?
Prior to the settlement.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. I felt the public...
Injuring the city's...
There are so many questions that people have asked that we cannot answer if it had been brought to the public arena. The public could have heard the final discussion and weighed in on it, and I think that would have been very healthy. Because right now, there's always gonna be a lingering doubt, did Save Loma Linda basically have almost a lobbyist sitting in closed session? And, Ovi, I appreciate your taking the position of saying, "I represent, I did not communicate about the case with Save Loma Linda," or anything that would be confidential in nature. I understand that's your position, if I understand it right. But the public has questions, because this is very unusual for our city to have... and I understand you're saying you're not the plaintiff, but you're very close. In fact, when you were quoted by the paper, you said, "The reason we filed the lawsuit was because of the hills. We were not gonna protect the hills." Ironically, the city has been acquiring the hills pursuant to the '96 initiative, which I worked on, and you actually had come out opposing our acquisition of two blocks of land in the hills. So, I find it very strange and ironic that the very thing you claim we were doing, we were not doing, we were not spoiling the hills, we were preserving the hills, and we were acquiring it to put it into open space. So, it's just... it's disingenuous comment on your part. I'll cease there.
You still didn't answer my question.
I did. What part did I not answer?
I was asking, why Floyd's question was, does the fact that his involvement might injure the city by being there constitute a conflict of interest? And you're basically saying...
Yes.
You're basically saying, "Well, let me finish my question, then you can answer it." Okay.
Sure.
You're basically saying that his involvement was bad, therefore, let's get the entire city involved, and let's just make it a public announcement of what our position is regarding the settlement. I don't understand that strategy. You know, the whole reason we're here tonight is because you wanted to throw it out into the public. You, I presume, wanted to throw it out in the public, and that's why you walked out in the first place, before we even settled the thing. So, what's your reasoning? What's your logic behind that? He's endangering the settlement by being there, because he might leak, and your remedy for that is an absolute public declaration of a leak.
It would actually... first, your first point was that it injured the public from the standpoint of having Ovi in the closed session? Yes, I believe it damaged the public.
Then why was your remedy multiplying that by a thousandfold?
Because if the plaintiff, in a sense, and I consider him certainly a principal of plaintiff group, if the plaintiff, in my view, is privy to what's going on in closed session, you might as well let the public in on it who's paying the bill.
So, make it worse?
No, it doesn't make it worse. If the plaintiff... there's nothing... there's no secret left... Dusty, there is no secret left.
Assuming he's a sieve.
Well...
Facts not in evidence.
Well, I think that the fact is that...
So, on the chance that he might be leaking, let's just throw it out into the public forum and just let everybody know what our strategies are. Let's let our lawyer advise us in a public forum.
I think in this case...
On a lawsuit strategy.
I think the public...
I don't get your strategy. Your logic is not present.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Because a closed session is not to prevent the public from knowing. That's not what a closed session is for. A closed session is to prevent the other side from knowing.
And you don't think that a public declaration would let the other side know? What am I missing here?
Well, but the other side already knows. So, what is the point of keeping it from the...
Well, apparently, you would be the one who would know that they know, but why would you assume that Ovi's leaking it?
Ovi is very much close to the center of Save Loma Linda. And one point I would certainly make is, the one thing he will not say is he has not discussed the case with Save Loma Linda while he's been part of the city council. He said, "Well, I haven't divulged exactly what was said in closed session."
We all have an obligation to do that. That's part of closed session. Something which this session tonight is treading close to violating.
Actually, you know, since... I know that we all wanna go home early and everything else, but...
We've given up on that.
Well, I would agree with Dr. Rigsby. There is absolutely no logic to that. Basically, they're trying to say that I'm disclosing closed session information. But, you know, it's interesting, because Mr. Ziprick did point out that there's questions that the public and reporters want to know, and it seems very frustrating for him that he can't answer them, and that's why he wants to keep it in the open.
Correct.
Well, it was very frustrating for me to get questions from a reporter, when he told me that Mr. Albertson, one of your former associates, legal people that worked in your law firm, was asking a number of questions about my involvement. And it wasn't simple questions about whether I was in closed session or not, but rather more of my participation and level participation. And the number of questions that the reporter asked me made it very clear, someone was leaking closed session information from this council to your law firm. And I thought to myself, "Am I living in Twilight Zone?" I thought these things don't happen, but obviously, they do. Furthermore, Mr. Ziprick keeps talking about that.
Let me address that before you jump to another one.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Albertson had not been part of my firm for many months, and he...
He was part of your law firm, and no, he was speculating.
No, he had been gone for eight months. He was free to speculate on whatever he wished to.
Well, furthermore, there was, back in, I believe, 2006, Save Loma Linda entered into settlement discussions, confidential settlement discussions, with the city. Lo and behold, during the campaign, the number... the actual numbers of legal fees came out during the campaign. The only way the developers could have known the amount of money that Save Loma Linda was asking was if someone from the city council was telling them. It's fairly clear to me that someone was leaking information from confidential settlement discussions. And from my understanding, the only people that were present in those were council members and their legal team. So, I don't think lawyers are... not all lawyers leak, but I'm pretty sure our city attorney is not leaking. So, that leaves us with just basically council members. So, it's very clear to me that I guess it's easy for you to assume there's leakage when there's been leakage before, so you assume that, "Oh, that's okay. Everybody talks, and we shouldn't... we'll expect Ovi to talk like what's been happening before." Well, guess what? Ovi doesn't talk. I know the rules, I know the laws. I enjoy having my freedom, and I understand that there's some rules in place, and I follow them. And I think that it's disingenuous for you to keep bringing it up as if it's a fact that everything that happens in closed session gets divulged to the other side. I already told you that didn't happen, and you keep repeating it as if it did. And I'm basically getting tired of it.
Well, first of all, I did not coordinate with other campaigns during my campaign, if you're wanting to know about that. And actually, I wasn't frankly that familiar with those numbers anyway. If you asked me, I couldn't tell you what they were. I never really had memorized those, so therefore, that would not be an issue for me. I will simply say, and I have not accused you of revealing everything that goes on in closed session. The issue is that there is a perception that when you're sitting in closed session and you're part of the principal group of Save Loma Linda, there's many ways that you can give, even inadvertently, hints, if you're in direct communication with them and you're part of the group, it creates a public concern. It's a perception. And one of the rules on the, frankly, on the conflict of interest is perception is very important to give the public confidence.
Be careful.
I would have liked to have had the public in on this, so the public could have heard what was going on in the settlement and hear the odds.
I really wanna try and wrap this up. I'm sorry.
All right.
Council could go all night. I literally am gonna leave to the airport for a flight within the next couple of hours. So, I really would rather not. I'm sorry. Unless the council would like to reopen for further discussion. I'm getting the sense that we've expressed our viewpoints.
One final comment, if I may. Just, I think the settlement was in the best interest of the city, the citizens. We need to move forward, try to make Loma Linda a better place, and do everything we can to ensure that we develop in a reasonable manner, and we try to pass things in a manner in which prevents lawsuits from happening. And I think that there's lessons to be learned from this. We had the general plan that was suited on not only by Save Loma Linda, but the development community, which cost the city a pretty penny. And the city did admit to the fact that the housing element wasn't in compliance and that it had to be fixed. So, I think the past should be a good lesson to us in how we should move forward. And I think that we're wasting too much valuable time discussing this, rather than working towards building something better for our community.
Is there consensus of the council to move toward conclusion of this session? I understand this obviously is a very important issue for all those involved and for the community, but at this hour of the night and so forth, I think probably it would be more productive that we do confine it to what we've said so far. We've gotten those issues on the table, and everyone has different interpretations, but at least everyone's given their explanations of how they see the issue. And unless the council feels differently, I will move on to reports of councilmen, in addition to any item that's on the agenda.
Yeah, I would just like to make one comment. Going back to item number two, something very ironic happened, and I probably should have mentioned at that point. We approved a project just to the east of Poplar Street tonight with a lot of apartments on it. That was not the first project that we had talked about on that piece of property, as you recall. The first project that we looked at very seriously on that project, on that piece of property, involved quite a large amount, a fair number of single-family homes, not apartments, single-family homes for low and moderate income, moderate-income, single-family homes on that project. We can't have those single-family homes anymore under Measure V, but we can have three-story apartments. So, that's what we've got. Instead of single-family homes for moderate-income housing people, we now have three-story apartments instead. That's what Measure V did to us on that piece of property. Ironic, just very ironic.
I respectfully disagree with that assertion. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Any report of officers? Sorry, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, if you would for a moment, on item number eight, which was continued, I did not hear if you had continued that to a date certain. The staff report was recommending October 13th.
I'll move it.
Moved in second to date specific, October 13th. I'm not sure at this hour whether I said that or not either, so to be certain, we will make sure. Any opposed to that? It is moved at date specific, October 13th. And any reports of officers otherwise? Who said our council meetings were dull and boring? But anyway, our city council meeting is about to be adjourned. My final comment is simply, I know I may be left with various feelings on all sides. I still truly believe this council tries to do what they think is best for the community, but unfortunately, at times, there are differences of opinion. City Council is adjourned.
Redevelopment agency is called back to order. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any comments from the public on any items not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to... we'll dispense with conflict of interest. I think we've discussed that enough. Item H2 is minutes of September 8.
Move. Ten minutes.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Item number three, requests from two restaurants to participate in our storefront rebate program for their stove hoods.
Move. Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick comment. This is a rebate program that we've initiated to try to help... there's some new laws and rules that require that restaurants change their hoods for their cooking. So, these are two restaurants have asked for some assistance from the city, and we're helping them with that. The only comment I wanted to make is that just remind everybody that we all eat, and we all eat out, so before we decide to go to some other town, trying to eat at our own local places, because not only does it help them as business owners, but we as a city benefit by having more tax increment. Thank you.
We agree on that, Ovi.
And these two restaurants are excellent.
Eat lots.
So, is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, it's approved. We are adjourned.